Hi, everyone. Now opening the February 7th, 2025 meeting of special board meeting of the Santa Rosa City Schools Board of Education. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, Superintendent Morales is going to say a little bit about the purpose and format of this meeting.
So, welcome, everyone. So, our meetings are, as you know, meetings of the board that take place in public. So, I like to think about it that they're in a snow globe and we get to watch their work in terms of leading the district. The Brown Act ensures that the public can observe these meetings and they provide opportunity to have input. Hence why we have public comment and comments on the different scenarios. There's three big board meeting types. Our regular board meetings, which are the ones that we normally do twice a month, a special board meeting and an emergency board meeting. So, each one of them have different criteria and different roles. In addition, the board can hold what are called board study sessions, which is today, as well as board retreats. Board study sessions, think of it as a workshop model. That's why we have the posters up and it's a very much fluid conversation with the board. And retreats are done for professional development of the board, which we're trying to plan one for March. So, today is a special board meeting with a board study session. Meaning in board study sessions, it is usually just one topic that will be discussed. And so, today it will be again a fluid conversation with the district team during this session. We're going to talk about the different scenarios that were discussed at Wednesday's meeting. It feels like it was a long time ago, but it's just a couple of days ago. And that's why the post papers are up. This is not the best place to have a board study session, but we couldn't find any other place. Normally, you want to have it like in a PD room where you can move around and put up posters and have easy conversations. So, that's the purpose of today. So, you will see me standing because I'm going to be kind of scripting as the team goes back and forth. So, we know, keep track of what it is that we're talking about. And also, the board might be able to get up and also make notes. And so, it is very much a work session of the board around the topic of school consolidations and closures. So, I just wanted to give that why it looks different, it might feel different, sound different, because it is a board study session. Thanks.
I am going to limit the total public comment to 20 minutes since this is a work session and we had the public hearing on Wednesday. And you'll have 90 seconds each. First up will be Mary Feige, followed by Natasha Deacons, followed by Erica Lipanovich, followed by Catherine Howell.
Can you hear me? We're good? All right. My name is Mary Feige and I've been a teacher for 34 years, 29 of them here at Santa Rosa City Schools. My children were students at Elementary High School when it was closed, so I know that there are difficult decisions that have to be made. Our whole community is going to be affected by them. And over time, we have proven that we are strong, resilient, and that we're going to make it through this too. That being said, no school or neighborhood should have to stand before any panel or the school board and beg or fight to keep their schools open. Please do not pick communities and schools against each other. Who speaks up the most at these meetings should have no impact on the decisions that need to be made. It's been incredibly frustrating and disappointing to watch the process unfold. The school rankings should have been done blind and when panel members started fighting for their own interests, they should have been removed from the panel. If the 3-1-1 plan was proposed to save the most money while affecting the least amount of families and staff, then that plan is the one we should stick with. We do not want to be here next year or the year after because tough decisions could not be made. If Northwest Elementary schools are closed, the district stands to lose ADA to neighboring districts. Piner and Mark West are already recruiting students and families on social media. Another consideration, I heard that they might be combining TK with middle school. Will combining elementary and middle schools be cost effective?
Thank you, your time is up.
It said on the website that we had three minutes. So, I'm going to finish this up, please.
It's at the discretion of the board president to be set at each meeting and for each item. We have been-
I have just a little bit more, can I please finish?
I am sorry, I have to be fair to everyone, it's a 90-second limit.
You only have a few cards.
I'm sorry, once I've set the time, that is the limit. Next is Natasha Deacons, followed by Erica Lipanovich, followed by Catherine Howell, and then Jonathan Munchow.
Good afternoon. My name is Natasha Deacons and I have worked in this district for over 25 years. During this time, I served as the original pathway coordinator under Hugh Futrell and again as a career pathway coordinator for SCO. I'm here today to tell you that people make schools work, not programs or buildings. The work in front of you is incredibly challenging, but I ask you once again to look forward in crafting your decisions. This district has tried to implement specialized programs at the high school level for decades. The IB program at Montgomery has existed forever and has been continually funded by the district. And yet, only two students graduated from the program in 2023. This information is available on their school profile posted on their website. When you hear cries from the community about saving IB, they are talking about saving those talented teachers they love, people, not programs. LC Allen has a university program and Piner has a STEM program, and yet, none of these programs bring students to our district. I'd argue that a focus on programs divides the schools. For example, Art Quest is not the only program in town. Encore at Creo is undeniably a vibrant and award-winning program. To suggest that Santa Rosa is a place for the arts feels like a slap in the face to Creo. Our mariachi band is successful not because we were told to offer it, but because Mr. Booker inspires our students. Even the mention of Creo becoming a tech high is troubling. Providing a safe and quality education at all sites should be the priority. Invest in people, not programs, not buildings. It is paramount to recognize that all families want a place to send their children where they are safe, where they can learn and where they will be cared for.
Your time is up. Next is Erica Lipanovich, followed by Catherine Howell, followed by Jonathan Munchow.
Hello, everyone. It shouldn't be, Erica Lipanovich shouldn't be surprised by now that I'm in favor of saving our high schools. The seven through 12 model, I've said it many times. But today, I'm here to talk about at the expense of what? I looked at the consolidation fact sheets regarding the consolidation of elementary schools. And I'm really concerned about some of these consolidation efforts that would place an usual burden on the elementary school community. Especially some of the consolidations that require putting three different schools potentially on the middle schools. I think leaving our district with only four options for an elementary school out of what we started out with nine just seems really drastic. And it's going to be really challenging for our community. I am concerned about overcrowding as well. Looking specifically at the east side, I'm happy to see Hidden Valley was mentioned there. I was a little bit sad for our neighbors at Proctor Terrace that they were included in one of these consolidation reports. Proctor Terrace is a wonderful school, has really excellent scores. It attracts a lot of people to our district. And I know for a fact, because I've spoken to a lot of them, would be very likely to choose home study or another option should their school close. So, I just wanted to say, highly suggest against that. And lastly, I can't remember what I lastly wanted to say. I think that was all I wanted to say, so thank you so much for what you're doing. Just please don't overcrowd our elementary schools.
Thank you. Next is Catherine Howell, followed by Jonathan Munchow.
Good afternoon, Catherine Howell, SRTA President. I want to just reiterate what we've been saying is put students first. Think about the families and the communities that are going to be broken and destroyed by this process, no matter what your decision. I'm very concerned with what I've heard Wednesday night and what it sounds like is a lean towards a 7-12 model throughout the district. That's concerning on a lot of levels for me as a middle school teacher, but mostly, it's concerning from a financial perspective of will that actually save the money that we need to save? And also, what about the facilities? Are they ready to go, right? They're not. There's not enough room there for a 7-12 model. There's not enough room in the Vapa rooms, there's not art rooms, there's not locker rooms and gyms and science labs. And so many things that all of our students deserve to have access to. So, we're talking about, you know, years of process to get our campuses ready for the 7-12. And will we actually be financially able to do that? And will it make us financially stable? So, I'm asking you to put aside some of the very compelling, but also very, you know, tugging at your heartstrings things that our students from the high schools have said over the last month and they tug at all of our heartstrings.
Thank you, your time is up. Next is Jonathan Munchow, followed by Damaris Cordero.
Hello, my name is Jonathan Moco. I'm a teacher at Santa Rosa High School and a parent of a fourth and a sixth grader. I'm here today to again to voice my support for middle schools and to plead you to shift away from the seven to 12 model. I know there are fewer people speaking on behalf of middle schools. However, they are also our smallest group and we should not expect them to be as loud. A decision made in desperation should not be thought of as a silver bullet. No one has suggested the 7-12 model before this process. No one thought it would be better for our students. There are zero circumstances I would want my 12-year-old to be exposed to the student conversations happening in the high school hallways. When A through G was rolled out, I begged the district to show me the best working model so that way I could learn from it and be the best that I could be. I was taken to a charter school that didn't have sped students and removed lower performing students and told this was the way to do it. That was not a reflection of Santa Rosa City Schools. We keep hearing about all of these unicorn seven to 12 models. If they don't reflect us, how can we possibly replicate them? And quite honestly, I don't have faith we could do it in three years, let alone three months. Please, keep our kids safe. Most of you were sponsored by the Safe Campus, of Safe Schools Alliance, because we felt that our high schools weren't safe. And now, we want to add 12 and 13-year-olds to those situations. No one would do this in their right mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Damaris Cordero, followed by Heather Grunbaum.
Buenas tardes, miembros de la mesa directiva. Mi nombre es Damaris Cordero. Quiero saber por qué en la reunión de LC Allen los padres no les dieron el tiempo de hacer comentarios. Este cierre de escuelas es el resultado de malas decisiones y exageradas contrataciones en la administración. ¿Acaso no es la meta velar por los intereses de los estudiantes tanto académicos como su salud emocional? No solo rellenar puestos en la administración. Queremos ver los fondos que este distrito recibe reflejados directamente en los estudiantes. No hay transparencia ni se rinden cuentas claras. Si esta situación empeora, les animo a que consideren la unión de distritos. Es tiempo de cambios, que revolución en el sistema y no de ideas de imposición que por años han afectado a nuestros estudiantes. Por favor, asegúrense que cada uno de ustedes al hacer sus votaciones de cierre de escuelas, que estén realmente incluyendo a todos los estudiantes y sus familias. Gracias.
I want to know why parents are not given time to comment. Oh, wait. I want to know why parents are not given time to comment the LC Allen meeting. The school closing is a result of bad decisions and excessive hiring by the administration. Isn't the goal to look after the interest of the students, both academically and emotionally? Not just to fill positions in the administration. We want to see the funds that this district receives reflected directly in the students. There's no transparency nor clear accountability. If this situation worsens, I encourage you to consider the Union of Districts. It's time for changes that revolutionize the system and not ideas of imposition that have affected our students for years. Please make sure that each of you, when voting to close the schools, are truly including all students and their families. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Heather Grunbaum.
Hello, thank you again for taking the time to really consider this. And after the meeting earlier this week, I was really heartened by the creativity that I am seeing from this board and I thank you heartily for that. Two things to count, to talk about. One, the IB program. Yes, there are few diploma candidates. That is the small measure of it. The IB program is a critical thinking program. Other communities that have the IB program, they often start in elementary school, continuing through middle school and through high school. It is a critical thinking program that only helps kids get ready for college, but helps them get ready for service, military service, as well as the career workplace. This is what we want for our students. Next year, for example, Montgomery is slated to have every single junior take English IB at a various different level. That's hundreds and hundreds of students. Believe me, it works. Other places that here we have IB, they say you must have a waitlist because it's that important. It's really an important program. As to the 7-12 model, again, it works. I lived it. I'm the person who came out of it. It is a great thing. Staggered start times, different bell periods, all these different things. It's continuity, it's inspiration, it keeps kids engaged, it keeps kids wanting to excel, it keeps kids wanting to do well in their classes. It shows where they can go. Let's think about the community, the building that we need to do again. Let's keep that continuity going, please. Seven through 12 model is important. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more blue cards?
There are no other blue cards.
All right, then we will move on to our discussion item, a study session on school consolidation enclosure.
So, there were a lot of things that were requested and quite a bit of conversation Wednesday evening. So, what we have done is we have collected the information that we've been able to gather within the amount of time, prioritizing some specific things that were asked. And there are further details, depending on today, that will need to be brought back. We do have a number of staff here that we can delve into some of the questions a little bit further. One of the questions that came up, obviously, we have our, the what is the best in the long run? The question came up multiple times, what is the best fiscal? What can we do logistically? What is best programmatically? And so, the first thing that we are going to share is actually something that's, reflects deeper reductions as far as the number of school sites, but that is the most logistically and, potentially, we had a long discussion between, that was interdepartmental, looking at it from the program side, from the logistics side, facilities and fiscal. This is not necessarily our recommendation. That's not what we're doing today is recommending anything. It is information as far as what would get us to above a 3% in the long run in that reserve, to make sure that we are not back here again. Again, this is just information. So, we'll start with that and then we'll move into some of the different, the seven to 12 and some other things that, were requested to bring forward and talk about program. We have facilities, we have data, we have most of our people represented here to provide answers. So, go ahead. Sorry about that.
John Fisher, Executive Director, Special Services, Santa Rosa City Schools.
Stacy Desideri, Wellness and Engagement, Executive Director, Santa Rosa City Schools.
Lisa August, Associate Superintendent, Business Services, Chief Business Official.
Emmanuel Bardelli, Executive Director of Information Evaluation, Santa Rosa City Schools.
Vicky Zanz, Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, Santa Rosa City Schools.
Rodri Castro, Assistant Superintendent, Educational Services.
Eric Oden, Executive Director of Facilities Maintenance and Operations, Santa Rosa City Schools.
Mr. Bardelli, can you just repeat? I'm so sorry, I don't think we've met and if we have, I apologize. But can you repeat your role in kind of what you do? Thank you.
Emmanuel Bardelli, I am the Executive Director of Information and Evaluation. Oh, yeah. I oversee our student information system, integrations with our vendors. And I also oversee the statewide or the state assessment program. And on the side, I do data work as needed. Yeah. Do, are we ready? All right. Good afternoon, everyone. As I said, my name is Emmanuel. I prepared for you the fact sheets that we are going to go over today. So, what I would like to do is to go over so that we all know what we are looking at. And then, we are going to review the two scenarios that have been most requested. So, let's start from the first, I want to say four fact sheets. They all present data for our current attendance boundary. So, it's the first five pages that you have in front of you. They all start in front that has current, elementary, middle and high school. And I believe there was a request to see how would the attendance boundaries and the statistics look? If Lawrence Cook was still in operation, that is your fourth one. So, on the fact sheet, there are a lot of information. So, let's walk through so that we all know what we are looking at. So, every fact sheet starts with an attendance map. Now, this is a suggested attendance map, won't be the final. I prepared, I think, about 15 of them so far. I can produce more and we can go more in the details of individual attendance map once we settle on a scenario. Then, we have a financial overview of unrestricted budget. And then, a breakdown over direct student-staff and support and operations. So, what that means is that that is what comes out from our general fund. And then, I divided them into two buckets. The funds or the budget is allocated to staff that works directly with students. So, under direct student-staff, there is instructional staff and guidance staff. And everything else is in support and operations. So, this includes school administration, front office staff, facilities cost, and then other operations like custodial and so on.
So, one of the things to keep in mind that we spoke about the other day and we did not get the opportunity to pull in all of the restricted information for these as well, is that we have a multitude of funds and each site, depending on the unduplicated pupil count and other factors, has varying degrees of cost related to the restricted side of the budget. So, this, when we're talking about having to cut funding, you know, to cut expenditures, we are looking at the bottom line at the unrestricted budget. There are some things that are, that in the restricted side of things that do have an impact on unrestricted, such as programs that require a contribution or a match in funding. So, when we talk about CTE, so is the Career Technical Education, the grants and the different programs. There's money that we receive in grants. And then, there's the matching funds that are captured, that are reflected in the unrestricted budget. So, just as we kind of go through, we're looking at all the numbers that we brought forward for savings. Those are considering of the impact on that general fund. So, they may come from moves in a combination of restricted and unrestricted areas. So, I know that that may be a little bit confusing since we haven't been able to pull everything together for you. But I just wanted to make sure that we're on the same page as far as that conversation. Sarah? Or Trustee Jenkins, sorry.
On the one that's after the middle school, what does LCMS stand for?
I'm sorry, Lawrence Cook Middle School. That's the school that was located on where CCLAs currently. And it was requested, I think, Wednesday night, so I was able to add it to this. The other thing to keep in mind is that this budget sheet was shared with the School Consolidation Committee, I want to say, on the fourth meeting. And so, the amounts that you see here are as of the data was pulled probably in October. There might be, if we were to pull the data right now, there might be a little bit of change, like probably like in the hundreds or in the thousands, but not off by like millions of dollars. So, these are all realized payroll obligations and other obligations that were encumbered as of October.
Right. And then, the other thing, as we're through all of these, as we look at the numbers, as the projections, you may have one that will say, and I'm just going to throw out there, say it's $11 million. It doesn't meet the 12.5. In our budgets, in our multi-year projections, we figure in escalation of costs because you have step and column movement. You have increases in all of those things. So, it doesn't have to be realizing 12.5 of these numbers here because there's an escalation factor. So, I just want to, when we're talking about that, it's not, okay, this scenario doesn't meet 12.5, it's only 11. That's probably going to be close enough to get us with those there with the escalation factor. So, I just want to make sure that we're not, that when we're talking, we're not looking at it as a hard and fast because there is some variance there.
But across the scenarios, we can compare those numbers. So, they might not project, so I think what Lisa was saying is that we, these numbers likely won't reflect the actual savings for next year because we haven't projected them out. But across scenarios, they stay the same because the projections will move together instead. Okay, any questions?
Before you continue on yet, so for all of the maps where we're looking at the 7-12 or K-8 or those types of proposals, with those, does this contemplate those campuses having the same boundaries? And then, they're going for more grade levels? Or would 7-8 have a different boundary than 9-12 if they're on the same campus?
It depends what you want to do. I believe all these scenarios that I prepared for today, the boundaries are the same. I tried not to have students move, like you go, I want to say no school, high school campus X for middle school and then you move to a different high school. Like, I think it's counterproductive, right?
And I guess I'm going to ask it from the legal perspective, we don't have a requirement that 7-8 has its own boundary. We look at it in the whole, so there's no restrictions around models.
And that's also part of the creativity in designing the boundaries. Those are separate though from the financials. Financials currently are not bound to the boundary, except for if a school is removed, is also removed from the budget. But the budget does not keep into consideration the boundary. It's not that sophisticated at this time.
And then, the same questions we've talked about, and I know we've had requests to continue looking at six, seven, eight and the places we're allowed to do that because of the overlap of our district. and the places we're allowed to do that because of the overlap of our districts. Because six is authorized under our elementary and seven, eight are authorized under our high school, when we're looking at the six, seven, eight, if it's in both districts, would we have to have different boundary maps? Or would we be able to have those be the same boundary maps?
I don't have a six, seven, and eight scenario written in here.
I'm asking for legal.
I do have TK six, which I think was also requested, and we are going to see how that might play out. Maybe a little bit later in the presentation. I don't want to jump ahead and then.
And I think what you're asking is, are, do we have any flexibility in our sixth grade boundary? If it's included as part of a seven, eight middle school, if it were converted to a, to a middle school of six, seven, eight? And our sixth grade boundary, from my understanding, has to align with our TK through six boundary. There, there isn't any, it doesn't give us any flexibility to move into any of our other.
So if we looked at a six, seven, eight, or, you know, five, six, seven, eight model, we could have a site that has two boundaries because of the, some of it would be determined by the high school district and some would be determined by the elementary?
Yes.
That, that could be possible, yes.
Potentially.
So for that specifically, we would need to discuss and talk about the inclusion of our charter programs and what that looks like charter wise. Obviously, Shracks is a five, six charter. It's not an elementary school boundary for our district, but it's a thriving program that we offer. This is a charter program. So I want us to continue to have discussions of expanding what we're doing really well and that providing opportunity to attract and retain our student population. When we go through these, I'm really interested in these school transfer numbers. And I'm curious if we can get a little bit more of a story behind the story of why we have such high intra-transfer numbers into Lincoln and Biella?
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, and I'm just thinking maybe if we can go, go through kind of the background and then we can get into the questions, if that's, if that's okay.
So then if we flip the page, then we go to enrollments. So the enrollment page is different from our current enrollment and then what you're going to see in the scenarios because then this will become projections. So the enrollment numbers here shows the capacity as it was reported to the School Consolidation Committee. It shows how many students live within the boundary that I reported in the front page. This is for all the students that I can geocode using their address. And then by enrollment, you see how within each attendance boundary, enrollment is separated between students actually going to that school and student leaving the, that traditional school for one of our charter schools, right? So that enrollment shows our own charter enrollments, schools that we operate, right? So it does not include our, you know, charter schools outside of the district because we don't know that. And that enrollment number includes both intra-district and inter-district. So that is the overall enrollment as of, I want to say today, 8:00 AM, more or less. So those are how many students we currently have in our schools. And then I know there was a question to look a little bit more transfer information. So what I try to do here is to give you a sense of how many students are incoming into a school and how many students are exiting to a school. And then we, I was able to pull both intra-district movement, meaning within our boundary, just students moving within, between our schools, and inter-district, both incoming and exiting. Those are students that are coming from outside of the elementary boundary, if you're looking for an elementary school or our secondary boundary, if you look for a middle or a high school. Now, just to, and maybe John, you can help me with the question about Lincoln and Biella. Pretty much, and those, a lot of those intra are special education IP placements, so.
Well, and at these schools, there are a, there are six ESN classrooms at Lincoln.
At Lincoln.
And five classes at Biella. And one of the things that we frequently see is that the student who receives that placement becomes for the family an anchor point. And there is a desire by the family to move all of the siblings so that you don't have a family where one student goes to one elementary and another student goes to the other. So a single special education placement will often carry with it a number of intra-district requests, simply to be able to keep the whole family together.
Okay, oh, yep.
What does the charter mean under enrollment? So there's the enrollment and then there's a charter line. What is that?
Yeah, so these are students that, so let's look at the first line. So for Abram Lincoln Elementary School, there are 43 students that are, live within the attendance boundary of Lincoln, but have decided to apply and are currently enrolled in one of our district-sponsored charter schools. So they can either be a CCLA, French-American Arts Charter, or Accelerity Charter School. Yeah, and so like you can see, that pretty much tells you that overall, our district charter schools enroll 547 students from our elementary schools. Okay. And then a part of redesigning attendance boundaries and part of the school consolidation guidelines, the CDE, the California Department of Education, publishes is to really consider equity implications when redrawing attendance boundaries. We know that by drawing attendance boundary around where people live, we know that our city, you know, we all have preferences on where we live and where we choose to buy a house and settle down. It might, if we draw attendance boundary without keeping equity into consideration, we might make worse some of the segregation that we have, like housing segregation and so on. So I did some work and trying to measure how much are our school different and in what direction? And so here, what I have is two metrics that you can use to kind of like think about how our schools are separate along different dimensions and then whether or not a new attendance boundary is helping, you know, reduce the differences that we see among our student population or making them worse. So here, what I present you is four metrics. Is a concentration based on race, ethnicity, concentration based on language status, special education status, or unduplicated pupil count, meaning students are eligible for free reduced lunch, that are homeless, foster youth, migrant, and receive EL services. So all of these, right, are on two different metrics that I call here the similar, dissimilarity index and variance ratio index. I'm not a sociologist by training, but these are two of the five measures that are usually used in the literature to measure housing segregation, right? And I picked here because they are, in my mind, probably the best measures that can help us both see at the individual school level, have a metric, but also at the district level, like if we take a big picture and say, okay, how much are we different, how, how much and in what directions are our school difference? So let's do kind of like a thought experiment, right? So let's pretend that we are going to build a 20-story school at 111 Ridgeway, and we send all our schools there. Now we are going to operate a one-school district, right? There, if you think about it, all our school is going to be all the same, right? And that school is going to be the average of our community, right? Perfect, right? So everybody's happy. That is not going to work, right? So we have different schools in different sides of the town and they reflect who lives around the school. And so these are what these two metrics try to measure. If you see a zero score in either one of these two tables, it means that the school represents the average community that we have, right? If the score goes, the farther away it goes from, from zero, it means that they are more different than the average school and there is a more concentration of students in one of these categories. And this is for the dissimilarity index. This is a distance, so it's always positive. And we can add it up and that tells you how different overall our schools are in this configuration. So if you can see here, our current elementary map, score .449 on our race, ethnicity, concentration metrics, right? As we go through, you can use that metric to see, is this map that is proposed making our, you know, differences higher or is trying to reduce them? Sometimes distance is not very interesting, or it does, but it leaves me wonder because it doesn't tell me, well, is it concentrating more along or less, right? So are there more English learners or are there fewer English learners at a site, right? For that, you will need to look at the variance ratio index. This is kind of similar, but it's on a different metric, so the numbers won't match one to one. But I usually go to this table to see the sign of the direction, right? So here, a positive means that there is more on one dimension, like more concentration along one dimension versus if you see a negative, there is fewer students. So again, if we, for example, look at the unduplicated count and you see that Abram Lincoln is scoring 0.95, that means that at Lincoln, we observe more students than average that are unduplicated. If we see the line below, Albert Biella is a negative .191, that means that there we see fewer unduplicated students than the average of the district. And so on, like for all of them. All right, so this is all the data I have ready for you.
Can I ask how that relates to the diversity criteria that the committee reviewed? How, how these two?
So whilst we are not required to keep that equity in mind in where we are in the process, there is a strong recommendation to not draw boundaries that make our diversity worse, right? So what CD does not, doesn't want us to do, or you know, you, I guess, is to draw a boundary that, you know, gets any student in this category all in one site or in a few sites, right? And really concentrates them, like and separates them from the rest of the community. So that is what to keep in mind is when we draw these boundaries, we can draw, you know, and kind of like play around so that we have super concentration of certain population versus not. And so that is not best practice at this time.
And so to, to your question about, did the committee look at this? Is that, is that what you're, how does this compare to specifically the information provided to the committee?
Not so much for, for what the committee did or didn't do with it, but the criteria they reviewed for diversity defined, diversity on a campus, I believe was within 10%, either way at 50%. And so I'm asking for the relationship of this data to, if we were, if we pull that chart up, looking at it and how we would read those three things together.
Yeah, so our current boundaries, right, is I think what they were going off. So that should match what you see in the first four sheets to what the committee had access to. All the other ones are new boundaries, so they didn't have access to that. So this is all new. And so I see these metrics to be used within when we compare across the different scenarios more than, you know, where we are now.
And so the difference may have been when the data was pulled? You might see a variance because lot, the data that the committee would have looked at would have been last year's certified enrollment versus when we're looking at this year. It's, when we're looking at these, this is this year's information?
That's correct.
I'm actually asking it from a structural standpoint. So the committee's criteria ranked based on being within a range of, I think it was roughly 10% of 50%, whereas this is going from the average of our district. And so I'm feeling like I'm getting apples and oranges. And so I just want to know how I should read this in conjunction with that data.
So, so what the committee would have looked at was by school site? Because they, they weren't looking at it as the average of our whole district. It was the, the way that say this, the state would have maybe pulled it if they were to look at an individual site, looking at the unduplicated. That was kind of the, I think that's the quick and dirty way to look at it is, okay, your unduplicated pupil count, the closer to 50% is going to give you the most diversity in, in, between English learners and socioeconomic status, that piece of it. They also looked at some race and ethnicity data. But again, that's, there are different ways to measure diversity.
So as, looking at all of the research you've all done with all your doctorates, is it better to be closer to average for the population? Or is it better to be closer to diversity within that 50% criteria? Or should we consider different things from reading those different things and why?
That's a tough question because it depends on, so 50%, like in, in, it does not mean much because off the top of my head, I think, so if you look at unduplicated students, right? Our elementary district, I believe we are above 80%, right? And so for us, it's going to be difficult just to draw, right? And for special education, be 50% special education, it, you know, like that, that is tripling or doubling what we have right now. Just, you know, so like it's, I, I don't know, like it's kind of difficult because it by percentage, right? English language, I don't know if we have 50% EL, I think it's pretty high. We have about 3,000, so we are at about 30%. So kind of like, I don't know, right?
There, there's probably some correlation there, but I, my recommendation as far as how we should be looking at the data, I would say that it's, we're taking a deeper dive by using the dissimilarity information that Dr. Bardelli's providing.
And that's really used to, almost like as a horse race, to compare models or scenarios within each other. And then we can bring back, like percentages of, like if, if we settle on one map, then I can bring back and say, these are the percentages under each one of these categories that we are going to realize next year, projected to realize. So kind of like to give you a better idea, but yeah, hopefully that answers it. All right, so now that we all know how to read the fact sheets, let's go and find the next four. And they all cover this, what I call 311 scenario. Now here you're going to see that I'm not very good at naming things. And so I apologize in advance. They make sense to me. And then I've been talking to people about this and everybody gets confused by my naming, so I, I apologize. But this scenario 311 is the scenario that was proposed and voted on in November and closes three elementary schools, one middle school and one high school. And this is why it's called 311 scenario. So I prepared three different scenarios for us to consider. Two for elementary school and one for a middle and one for, actually, sorry, two for the high school based on the school consolidation committee's recommendations. So if we find the first two that cover the elementary, so this one's proposed or show a possible scenario where Biella, Brook Hill, and Steel Lane are closed. And that is the first one that's called just scenario 311 elementary. So overall, you can see that here we have overall cuts of about five point, sorry, $9.5 million and projected savings of $3.8 million.
So the, the difference on that has to do with, yes, there's a reduction, but you know that some of those costs are going to move with the students to the other site. And so when we're doing just kind of a rough estimate for this, it would be expecting about a 40% savings overall with about, you know, with most of that, you know, some of that coming in the support and operations and then looking at about a 15% savings in the direct student because that's, you know that most of the teachers, you know, some of the counseling, those support staff will have to go with, with the students to, to the new site.
Yeah, and pretty much total savings from the support and operations side, right? So we won't need to operate a school anymore, so that, that column will totally be saved and then about 15% reduction in direct student staff.
There's an elementary school that's missing from the financials?
I, I noticed that it, it's just like, I want to say, cosmetic, but it's, it's still here, like in, in, in everything and it's in the back. I don't know how it, it wasn't there, so yeah, I, I don't know, sorry. But the numbers are going to be the same as you have up here. And since Helen Lehman is continuing operations, it does not impact the overall financial projection.
In that scenario, it doesn't, it doesn't impact the scenario. In that scenario, it doesn't, it doesn't impact the scenario.
Does it? Yeah. So the three schools again that are going to be closing this scenario are Biella, Brookhill and Steel Lane. So we saw the savings and then on the back, now we see projections for attendance. And the challenging part about this configuration is that while we project to have about three thousand students in attendance, we have about twenty-eight hundred seats for them in those facilities, six facilities that keep open. And so we are short about two hundred students, which is not good because we need to have space for them. And so this is where the second elementary scenario comes into place where in, yeah.
Let's wait, we have a question.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
Lisa, maybe this is a question for you. While we're running these numbers, has there been any way to simulate the attrition in loss we're going to expect if any of these campuses are closed? Because we have to be considering upfront that we cannot assume that if we close three schools, we're retaining all their students and they're just going to other campuses because that's not the reality.
Correct, and at this point, we have not gotten to that piece of it yet. So yes, that's part of what we're working on, but we aren't there yet.
And just to confirm that when you say projections, this is for next year, not further down the road? When you're saying projections, that's a next year's projection?
Correct, for enrollment, yes.
The assumption of these projections is that the same enrollment patterns that we observed this year will continue for next year. So, you know, to De La Torres' comment, it's a big assumption to make, right? And we might have, you know, fewer students now. I don't know if we can bank on that or not, but now the next sheet presents a scenario two. This scenario combines Proctor Terrace, Brookhill and Luther Burbank at one campus, at the Santa Rosa Middle School campus, which will be closed in, you know, the next scenario. So, and this is needed because of the lack of facility capacity for the six schools that were identified to be open. And if we look at the projections, you will see that we will have enough seats for the students in this scenario, potentially with some additional construction here and there to accommodate the students. The savings are a little bit higher because we are going to stop operating more schools and the projected savings are six-point-three million dollars under this scenario.
For capacity, this is permanent capacity or is this including portables?
This was the non-permanent capacity was the other capacity.
This includes all of our existing classrooms regardless of?
That's correct. A permanent capacity on the school consolidation committee just includes permanent structures without portables. And so this one is the other column, which includes both actual buildings and existing portables. It does not include a potential new construction, so, and there is, and we can go more in detail on that. So, oh, sorry, yeah.
Just a quick question. So on this scenario, because you included Proctor Terrace and it wasn't on either of the two tiers, why was it included in that?
That was a good question. It's just proximity to the Santa Rosa Middle School campus. And so the three-one-one scenario closes Santa Rosa Middle School that we are going to see in a sec. And since that facility or that space is open, the three schools that are around there are Proctor Terrace, Brookhill and Luther Burbank. Or the school still in operations on scenario one, right? Brookhill, sorry, Proctor Terrace and Burbank, and they will be joined or merged on that campus at the same time as they were, you know, absorbing part of Steel Lane and Brookhill, which are already closed. Yeah, that's pretty much it. There isn't like other configurations where you know, you can't really merge, for example, Lincoln and Burbank at Santa Rosa Middle because of where they are. It's kind of like this weird space or the same thing if you say, you know, Burbank and Helen Lehman at Santa Rosa Middle. So like it's kind of like difficult and those make sense geographically.
As you look at it, also take a look at the actually boundary maps because as we get into some of the other scenarios, the boundary maps become a complete mess. And so, yes, we will give you all of the scenarios, but with each scenario, take a close look at the boundary maps because that does affect it in terms of where students would be coming from, where it could be a difference of a street where you're going to, it's just watch the boundary maps because they do help tell the story.
With the boundary maps, well, they're possibly after this meeting. Can you plug in where the schools actually are in those boundaries? That would be helpful. Thank you.
I've been looking at these maps for like six months now, so I can just tell you it's right there, but sorry, it's. Yeah, and, okay, so, and then the next map is the middle school map. This one follows the recommendation of closing Santa Rosa Middle and keeps in operation Lincoln Valley Middle School on the north quadrant. Purvis later, kind of like there in the middle and then Comstock on the west side of town. So this overall has a projected saving of two million dollars or realized through the closure of the Santa Rosa Middle School campus. Okay? And then you have the two scenarios for the high school. One is without El Cialan and one is without Montgomery High School.
Which is which on here?
Yep. And this one is the one without El Cialan and the attendance map. And the other one is without Montgomery. This scenario altogether is safe between four million dollars if we stop operating El Cialan, up to four-point-six million dollars if we stop operating Montgomery. So overall, I don't want to do the math like here in front of everybody, but I think we are at about between ten and twelve million dollars, you know, give or take.
Can I ask a quick question about elementary two?
Yeah.
There's five areas on the map, but only four schools. I'm trying to figure out what's what.
It's, okay, so, and that's the same issue. Helen Lehman, for whatever reason, is not printing on the financial tab. And Helen Lehman is the one in the middle of town.
Got it, thank you.
Right, right, the middle, that would be Helen Lehman. And now clockwise from the top, Hidden Valley, Santa Rosa Middle School or Santa Rosa Elementary School, I don't know how it's going to be called, and then moving on, Lincoln and then James Monroe with Helen Lehman right in the middle.
So as we're moving through this, just real quick to paint a picture, I understand we're need to look at these by our boundary maps and geography, but our inter-district transfers are painting a huge picture that cannot be ignored. And a lot of this, we can't assume people are going to stay in their neighborhood and go to the school that we put in their neighborhood. Our families have already shown that they're willing to apply and transport their students to the schools they want them to go to. Or with the numbers I'm seeing like at Lincoln and Biella, where the programs are that their students need and bringing their siblings with them. So geography is super important, but our families have already shown that they're willing to travel to get their students to education they're looking for or the education is where their students need. So we got to really keep that in consideration as well as we're looking at these maps. We can't just assume if we put a school in the neighborhood, because that makes sense geographically, the families are still going to go there.
And to add to that point, the, depending on where the schools are, you have families who don't have the option to do that also. And they're, on the flip side, that means that we either need to be providing transportation, which changes the costs, or we need to be very cognizant of how and where we're looking at those geographically. So we have that balance between the two ends there that is part of this overall consideration for, for, you know.
And I believe mechanically, we need to have a catchment area or an attendance area for a school. I don't believe, I mean, we could potentially operate five schools with open enrollment. I don't know how that would really work. I don't know of any district that runs schools like that.
At the high school level, that happens more often at the elementary, that's unusual.
At the elementary, we're a lot more of walking schools, particularly in the Lincoln Lehman area. That is normally all of our walking schools, so that's, and that's where our concentration is. Dr. Bardelli will share, the concentration of our students come from that side of town, so.
And so, yeah, and that's, and that's part of the challenge of drawing, especially the elementary map, is that most of our families with young children that are, you know, elementary school age do live on the west side of one-on-one around the Conningtown Mall, right? And that is the area that's currently served by Steel Lane. So you can see here that, sorry, on the current elementary.
Yeah, that's where, I think that's where I'm at.
It's on the screen. It's that weird, this weird area here, see how it goes in? This is where we have about, we have about a thousand students living in that. And so, and that's why all the maps have some sort of rework of that area. All right, so this is the, oh, sorry, before I move on, sorry.
I just had a question about the boundary maps on both of the high school scenarios. Because, I mean, obviously, there's going to be new lines. However, I'm seeing that Santa Rosa High would also be drastically impacted. It takes out like a chunk. I'm curious about like, and this may be coming, but when we redraw boundaries, what happens to the current kids that are there that are freshmen? Or do they have to leave? Like, how does that work?
When we consider the way that we currently have our board policy and our administrative regulations around transfers, the first and highest priority that we look to accept are the continuing students. And there are some protections, both in our board policy and in ed code, in not disrupting students at their junior year. So if they have been at a school until their junior year, they kind of have a little bit of extra protection, even if the family were, for example, to move outside of the Santa Rosa area at the age of juniors. A family who applies and says, can I stay for my final senior year? That is our highest priority. So when we look, we don't do a clean straight lottery like what you might see at a charter school where everybody's name goes in and they just randomly draw. So we have it set up that our first priority are our continuing students, that ensuring that if you are already at a school, those would be the first names that we accept. And our district has experienced this occasionally. Over the last few years, we get to a place where we may have three hundred requests to attend a school and we don't have room for all of them. So we accept by priority as opposed to just doing a random draw and we protect those continuing students.
To follow up on that, what about the kids that are in a new district and they actually want to go to that school and it's full?
Well, and what you're touching on is exactly the uncertainty that we are living in right now because we have families that are saying, after our board makes a final decision, will this school have capacity? And it's really a three-step answer. So step one, we have to make a decision. Step two, we have to redraw the boundaries for whatever decision it is. And then step three, we have to analyze the capacity at that time with the new configuration of the school to determine whether or not, how much room will we have to be able to accept new transfers? We have some proposals about possible adjustments to the priorities that might help kind of maintain the value of keeping families together. Because in terms of the priorities, we've got the continuing students and then like step five is students with siblings. And there's a lot of things in between. But until we have a decision about what our district might look like, we're in a phase of uncertainty.
But will that phase be certain by our decision day? I'm just so concerned about all of our families in this community not knowing what to do next on February nineteenth.
It sounds like you were in our meetings. Stacy and I had this conversation. So there is, as Stacy was saying, there is this waterfall effect. So the first priority for a school is to serve their residents, right? So whatever we draw the attendance boundary, those students get priority in enrollment, right? What we are going to try is to say to any student, if this is the new boundary, you are going to have a spot at this new school, right?
And that's by both our board policy and ed code that no transfer should displace a resident student.
Now, we can't, we don't know who's our resident until we have the new attendance boundary, right? And so like we are in this like chicken and egg problem where we can't, for example, open registration for next year until we know where students are supposed to go. I don't want to register students right now to schools that I know might be closed next year. It feels like confusing to families, telling them, you know, go to this school next year, you know, see you, you know, whenever it's the first day of school. And then we need to, you know, call them and say, actually, we closed, you need to go through the process again. And then after registration is closed, then there is the inter-district transfer and the transfer for displaced families, right? So as you were saying, continuing students that may be, now the boundary has been redrawn and they are not supposed to be there, they are in twelfth grade, they have older friends, they want to walk with their friends and now they need to change school, right? And that is another thing that we talked about, that we would like to keep them at the school that they've been attending as much as possible. And then after that, at the end, there is the inter-district transfer. Students want to come in from our neighboring districts, right? They are not our residents, but they still want to come to our schools.
Obviously, we won't have answers for families on the twentieth. If there's a decision made late in the evening on the nineteenth, we're not going to be able to, you know, with four hours of non-sleep, be able to answer this question. But we will, we have been communicating regularly with families about the process. We've had a lot of families reaching out and saying, can I make adjustments? And we're being very flexible on that.
Yeah, my goal is to take a couple of days to set everything up and to have everything live. It's probably taking less than that, but I don't know because I haven't started coding that yet.
So I think I want to jump in here really quick because I know a trustee man area asked me the question. In previous years where there was a closing of a school, the district had to hire some, a consultant to come in and do all the boundaries and all of that. And then that had to be approved because it was just a step-by-step process. We're very lucky that with Dr. Bardelli, we don't have to do a consultant. He can redraw the boundaries for us. So our ability to do this quicker is much quicker than many of you have experienced in the past where we don't have to bring in an MOU for a consultant or wait for that to be approved and them to draw the maps. We can do it pretty much live through Dr. Bardelli. So the process will be a lot faster.
And can I suggest that on the nineteenth, we actually just have a timeline that's a part of the report for this? I want to come back to the elementary school boundaries. So this data shows that we have currently with our current situation fewer than nine hundred spots of open capacity, which means that any three-one-one model would necessitate increasing the, opening a new elementary school that has larger capacity. Is that, am I reading this data correctly?
Well, the current school is, was the first sheet that we looked at.
Yeah.
It shows capacity for four-thousand-one-hundred-and-twenty-eight students and currently enrolled at three-thousand-one-hundred-and-thirty-three. So we are about a thousand students over.
Right under a thousand, but if our resident, sorry, I was using the residence line.
Oh.
So, because we have to make these decisions to potential enrollment, not to current enrollment.
Aside from, remember, the charter? Aside from, remember, the charter is pulled out of that residence?
Right.
So those are, those students are going to charters within our school and within our district, and we would assume that those should be continuing.
So our, our smallest capacity school is 384. There is no multiple of three of our current schools, and if we close them, we would not end up without having seats for current or potential elementary students.
Yeah, I, that is the struggle. I, you know, I, I've, I've, I've been going through the same process like myself, as I was trying to wrap my head around, should we draw a boundary based on residence? Or should we draw a boundary on students that actually live in the residence area and go to that school?
But, but either of those wouldn't work with three school closures.
So there is the possibility to move portables as part of that as well. We just have to make sure that we are increasing capacity by less than 25% or 10 classrooms, whichever is less.
And what is our potential ability to increase capacity for these scenarios is going to become very important to this conversation. I'm staring at Eric.
These are the things that he's got here right now.
Where are we in having that information? Because understanding, I, we need to know how much capacity we could put onto the campuses if we're keeping them, if we can't hit the capacity scenario here.
Yeah, as Lisa said, CEQA, you know, exemption keeps us at less than 10 classrooms or 25% of capacity growth to, to have an exemption. So that will play a critical factor. If we do, we have enough existing portables, we can move in this summer to make capacity grow, but depending on the number.
So 25% or under keeps us within the CEQA exemption to increase capacity by moving portables? But what does the capacity of the sites to receive those portables and have them set up look like?
Yeah, that depends on the school, but most, yeah, most have room to add portables.
And with my understanding that Eric, with the information that Eric's been looking into and working on with our architects in preparation, that, hey, there's something that's probably going to need to happen here, that we, we would be looking to use a hardship for DSA to, to get approval after the fact on, on those through the, because of school closure. One thing that I wanted to, just before I forget, showing the current high school boundary map is a little funky, and I think that it's important for people to see that currently Santa Rosa High is split in their boundaries. This is Santa Rosa High, and this is Santa Rosa High. So it's, it's a little funky, that, that it's, there are two sides of Santa Rosa High, and Maria Correia comes down in between, and then Piner kind of goes this way. So just knowing that those are some of the weird things that are happening right now that we're looking at as we look at boundaries, something like that may be, may be changed even in a config, in a reconfiguration with all five.
All right, so again, just to say this out loud, we have to be so cognizant of this very specific issue. Not only are we contemplating the need to close and consolidate campuses, make some campuses at a higher capacity, but close others, the very realistic reality of once our boundaries change, we're telling families that you cannot go to the school you went to this year.
That you, that, that there may, there's a potential.
I might be telling a freshman that they can't be a sophomore at their current high school if that high school survived all of this.
So again.
Have I got these boundaries put up with Correia on Santa Rosa?
When we, when we are taking a look at the enrollment numbers, if a student is currently attending there, they are considered as part of those enrollment numbers.
Okay, and I think that's something really important the public hears.
Mm-hmm.
Because as we start talking about these boundary shifts and these lines changing and being in the zone and out of the zone, families seem to know, if you're in a school that survives this, you are staying in that school. Potentially, yes.
Well, every year, we have to reanalyze our ability and our capacity to be able to accept additional transfers. And those of you who have been on the board for a while know that every August, you adopt a resolution about what does it mean to be at capacity? And we stop and we close applications, whether it's inter or intra, when a school is at its 80th percent capacity, in order to allow there to be room for residents who might move in August 20th, rather than in June. But when we look at our, these current numbers, they are including the students who are enrolled there because of residence, the students that are enrolled there because of intras, and the students that are enrolled there because of interns. We might revoke a student's transfer while they're at a school for very, very limited reasons and only for interns. It is for inappropriate behavior, inappropriate attendance that does not approve, or a student who is not engaging academically as per their, you know, specific plans. Other than that, if a student has been accepted, our practice in the district is that they stay until the next feeder jump. So when a student is accepted at first grade on an intra, we don't boot them out at second grade. They stay until the feeder jump between sixth and seventh. And then if they apply and are accepted, they stay until the feeder jump at ninth. The only time we do look at having to move a student would be if they are in a specialty program, and that program has met its capacity, that we would have to consider denying a student access to a special education program that no longer has capacity. But it's important to remember that if there is a freshman who is enrolled at the school, they're part of those enrollment numbers that we are protecting. A brand-new student who says, I have never attended school X, I would like to apply, those are the ones that have the concern about whether or not we'll have capacity. But if a student is currently enrolled there, that is going to be our highest priority, is to maintain their ability to stay.
And I appreciate that. I'm just still trying to make sure I'm wrapping my head around this correctly, because regardless of how long any of us have been on the board, nobody's had to deal with this at this level and what we're dealing with. And we are making decisions that are going to increase capacity at levels that those sites have never seen before. So, you know, of what we're dealing with. So I just want to make sure we're thinking this through, we're talking it out, that's what the study section is for, as far as talk this stuff through so that we can make the right decisions moving forward. But I don't want these decisions putting families or siblings at risk of staying where they're at, because we've outsized a remaining campus.
And I, I just want to add, as the elementary parent on the board, I also want to make sure that the current year's concerns don't prevent us from taking actions that structurally enable our future generations to have a higher quality education than we're currently providing. So I want to make sure we're balancing, I, I have a student who went through a merger and a closure and being moved. When CCLA went to Cooks, I'm very intimately familiar with the impact this is going to have on our families. And we need it to end with a result where we're actually improving the educational quality. So that's going to be a balancing act for us. And when I see boundary maps like that, I, I wonder if in the long run, are we keeping neighborhoods together? Are we keeping communities together for youth rec leagues? Are we keeping, you know, it's not just our campuses where these communities exist. And so I'd want to make sure that those boundary maps, thinking for the long term, are making sure that we're keeping a continuity of the community, the sub-communities within Santa Rosa.
Exactly, yeah.
Can I just ask a follow-up question to Stacy? Or Ms. Desdary, I'm not sure which I'm supposed to call all of you. With people who are enrolled in a program or school, I am hearing that the charters, well, I'm hearing that charters are accepting enrollment as well as ArtQuest. And that is a concern to me, because that's people moving around who have been told that they are absolutely going to that school next year. Is that, what is the reality in that? And how does, what are the implications to the rest of our community?
Well, I, I think it's important for us to all acknowledge that there are certain timelines that we try to follow. For example, we allowed all families from October 1st to November 15th to apply to attend a school other than their neighborhood school. And the charter programs followed their typical process. They accepted applications and they did their lottery draw. That is always at the, you know, they are, just like every other school, on this list as being potential subject for decisions that you will all make. And if we, you know, if we accept and we tell, you know, 100 families, you've been accepted at program X, and you make the choice to close program X, we will have to work with those families about, would you like to return to your neighborhood school? Or would you like to make an alternative decision? It's the exact same situation that you might find yourself in if you make a decision of 3-1-1 or scenario 206, or whatever scenario you, you choose. You, we will be, in that moment, displacing a family who believes that they know exactly what school their child will attend next year. That is the difficulty. And I, I, I think some, a seed that I, that I feel is important to plant is that an under-enrolled school, so a school that has lots of capacity, gives us the ability to tell families, you have limitless choice. Whatever school you prefer, we can move your child to that school. That's the benefit of an under-enrolled school. The cost of an under-enrolled school is one of the reasons that we're here today. By having schools that have lots of extra seats, it's not always the fiscally most solvent way to run the district. So we are facing a difficult, you know, dilemma here about allowing limitless decisions and choice, and our ability to fiscally support that, that freedom.
So just to follow up, charter schools are able to enroll students outside the district in, the district transfer process, and so they are pretty much open enrollment to anyone. The way that the intra-district process works, students are admitted into a program like ArtQuest, and then they apply to the intra-district transfer with the application. All those are, all, all of those transfer requests have been currently all waitlisted, and we have not accepted anything. And as we said, we are waiting until at least, probably the last week of February or the first week of March to make an action on those, depending on, you know, what happens on the 19th. So I'm pretty sure that no student has been admitted at Santa Rosa High as part of the ArtQuest program.
Yeah, and just to clarify, charters are separate schools, they're separate code. Magnet's a separate school, separate code. ArtQuest is not a separate, it's a, a program that just exists within our high school. It's Santa Rosa High School. It's just a program within Santa Rosa High School. So it doesn't, it wouldn't.
Similar to early college magnet, international baccalaureate, or the university program.
It's not a separate school.
I'm going to do a time check. We have an hour and 35 minutes left, and we haven't flushed out these two scenarios yet, so we haven't gotten to the other ones. Just making sure we stay on track.
Really quickly, two, two questions. Dr. Castro, the, you said the differences in, as we're reimagining programs, and we have charters, so we understand what that looks like, and how boundaries and admittance works for that, and we have neighborhood schools. Quickly, what is, what does the magnet model look like if that was one of the options we were looking at? How does that impact boundaries admission in the like 10,000-foot level?
Oh, we don't have a magnet, we don't have magnets.
Where?
And we'd have to apply and actually create, we'd have to apply to the CDE to open a magnet.
But it's, does it have boundaries? Does it not have boundaries? How does that work?
No, we basically have to make, submit an application to have a magnet. A magnet is, is an idea that districts come up with, that to draw certain populations to schools like STEM for specialization. We, that's not something necessarily that we need, because we have so many different specialized programs within our district already to draw for people that might be, or families that might be interested. Like, we could focus, like, if we were to have focuses at a particular high school, say Montgomery wanted to have like an international focus and like reimagine itself as an international school with diplomacy, and really broaden its IB program and include it to 7 to 12, and, you know, the principals have been speaking about this sort of thing, and really brand the school in a very special way. That is the idea behind a magnet, right? Some districts decide to go the full Monty, so to speak, right? And actually say, we're going to get a CDS code. That's a lot more complex, and it takes a process that involves an application and going to the CDE and going through the whole thing. But we could do the exact same thing here without having to actually go through the formalized process.
Perfect. And the last sentence you just said as I was looking here. John, on special ed, we're seeing the impact of inter and intra enrollment because of having a concentration of special ed classrooms. The trend in the state and the trend in code and funding, is that heading towards being able to maintain those concentrations, or are we looking at having more of a dispersed?
I think our goal, and Lisa spoke to this, I believe, on Wednesday, is to disperse those classes so that, first off, the, the students are general ed students first, and to the extent possible, if a student is in a program, we would like them to be in their home residence, school of residence, or nearby. And so the intent, regardless of this process, would be to disperse those classes. That said, there's absolutely some value to, for example, we're looking at three ESN classes and pods, it makes some sense to not have singleton classes. So I think, again, the appropriate goal, and this is statewide, and it would improve inclusion opportunities, and Stacy mentioned the, the point about siblings going to, say, Lincoln or Biella. Again, if we were able to spread them out, potentially some towards the east side, I think that would make it easier, where students wouldn't have to have intra-district transfers so much in, in those cases, and they could be closer, at least closer to their home school.
So generally speaking, wherever we go, we're going to see a change from what we're seeing in these numbers, and we're going to see something fewer than six on a site, but greater than one is kind of the goal?
I, I, that's absolutely our goal. The logistic, the logistics of it is a different question, but I think that's consistently our goal and is a more equitable practice.
Follow-up question to that regarding special ed. So a couple weeks ago, or a month ago, I have no idea our timeframe anymore, the special ed presentation of saving at some point down the line approximately $20 to $30 million. While I understand that this is not a thing that is going to happen overnight, and it will likely not impact our budget in a positive way by August, can you say any more to that as far as, like, I, I fully understand that the money that we're, that we will be saving will, most of it will likely be redistributed to even things out, and I am fully on board with that. However, seeing that we're facing such a crisis, and this is happening at the same time, can you just speak to that a little bit?
Sure. So there's several factors that are, that have increased our special education costs dramatically and that we're, we're working on. One, the non-public agency costs are, have been, there's been, I'd say, an extraordinary increase. Again, we're hoping to hire more district staff and distribute them more efficiently. A second major cost has been out-of-district placements. I have some positive news on that front recently. Based on communication with SCO, we're planning, and SCO is planning with us, to take approximately 30 students back from, 30, 31 students back from SCO, which this, the SCO placements, this year cost $104,000. Now, of course, so that's probably three special education. Now, of course, so that's probably three special education classes. So there will be increased costs on our end. So that's a positive development. Longer term, I think developing a more robust MTSS model, which we're in the process of, of, we're doing a pilot learning center this year and potentially next year to decrease our identification rate, which is 19.4, 19.5%. That's not an overnight process. It will take some more time to do that. And in addition to that, developing processes to more efficiently, appropriately exit students if it's appropriate from a special education. As another thing identified in the study was very, very large overages among some of our service providers per our contract. And ideally, we don't want to deny a student any services that they absolutely require, but hopefully we can build some more efficiencies into our system. Then the last one is the number of placements we have at non-public schools, which is in the neighborhood of 140. And I've mentioned that before, which for this larger district is an extremely high percentage in, in the fact that we have a wide variety of programs to serve our students. Our department is working on ways by building programs and also prevention to bring some of those students back. In addition to that, we're working with some of our feeder districts. For example, maybe 12 of the SCO students are from our feeder districts, but we're working with SCO where they will move into a Santa Rosa program instead. We should be able to have some very soon budget savings with respect to those. Again, the longer term with respect to the identification rate, I think is going to take some years as we have to build out our MTSS process.
Since we're on this topic, Lisa, can you explain why we can't drastically reduce sped costs from one year to another when it's illegal? So she can explain.
Yes. So we have a requirement to meet a maintenance of effort. And so with that, there are four ways to meet it. But in general, what it means is at a, at a very high level, we have to spend the same number of dollars, the same amount from one year to the next. For special education, we can't reduce it. So if we spend $20 million this year, next year we have to spend $20 million. There are four different ways to calculate that though. One, so it has to do with, and that's with state and, and/or local funds. So our federal dollars, those are our federal dollars, whatever, you know, those, we, we have to make sure that we are, we can spend less in federal, but then that means we have to spend, you know, we have to meet that state and local part of it. So it's either that flat amount of the state or combined with state and, I'm sorry, state and local or local only. And for us, when we're recognizing local funds, that's typically reflected in our contribution. So that, so when we're talking about, okay, we need to reduce that contribution to the special, to special education because of over-identification or whatever these different things are. The only way to reduce that amount is to either reduce the number of special education students because that, the, the other way is, is the dollar amount per special education student. So if we had $20 million we're spending and we have 1,000 special education students, and I'm just throwing numbers out here, they aren't correct. That next year, we either have to spend $20 million or if we have 900 students instead of 1,000, we can reduce that proportionally. So we could say that, okay, we only have 900 students. So that 1,000 divided into that 20 million, now we can retake 100 of those students off of there and spend this, this other dollar amount. So, but, but again, between the state and local, those same calculations four times. We have to meet at least one of those. And the, the, the concern is, is that if you only meet one, then that's your only option that you have to always hit. Because otherwise, basically it's a dollar for dollar penalty if you don't spend your state and local at, at that same level. So we would have to spend it anyway by actually paying it.
In connection to, to facilities for those programs, so MTSS wellness facilities, the programs that we would be maintaining under special ed, is that included in our capacity calculations here?
Yeah. So, so a clarification, MTSS and wellness are not special education.
Right. So, and special ed not.
Okay, yeah, sorry.
So across those types of services that we're providing, for which we're providing space on the campuses, and this would extend to STEAM lab. I mean, we have a lot of space that's actually been used for something. So are we, if we go all the way up to complete capacity, are we going to push out programs that were required to continue funding?
So yes, and, so yes, and we, we will have to be careful what that looks like. And until we get to a configuration, in fact, as we start talking about some of these seven through 12 configurations, that's where we run into some of these logistical concerns, serious logistical concerns with capacity for the extras that we've either provided based on, you know, that have come out of COVID or the, you know, the pandemic that have really been very beneficial that we realize that students need. Or the difference of how do we combine two completely different grade, sets of grade levels on a campus that's built for one, not the other? There, there are lots of issues with, with that and capacity. Yes, you're, the capacity is every 960 square feet is essentially a classroom, which we have many classrooms that are being used as a health office or a wellness center or these other things. And so part of the, what the board will need to consider as we move through this is there may be some things that are offered at a lesser level or offered in a different way over the next couple of years or in perpetuity, depending on what, what makes sense for the structure going forward. That based on vegetarian constraints, physical, you know, plant constraints and just logistics.
I'd love to move to those logistical concerns if we could.
Just to give you a little bit of background, my understanding is that capacity is calculated by identify any space at a school facility that meets the minimum requirements for a classroom. 900 and, sorry, 960 square feet, right? It's pretty small. And then what you do is, okay, a class can hold 33 students, right? And we can hold five periods out of six, so that's 80% use. You multiply all of, you know, the count by that and that will give you the capacity. So that means using every available space as a classroom. Meaning, you know, like if you see a school that is at capacity, it means you have students everywhere.
Okay. Can I push this forward? You, we gave these two scenarios. The first one gets us to about 9.8 mil. The second gets us to about 12.9, but it has, the first scenario had us closing Santa Rosa Middle, Middle School. But the second scenario, Santa Rosa Middle become like a super elementary. So it wouldn't, it wouldn't, it would be used for that purpose, right? So tell us why the difference and why the scenarios came forward.
Sure. So the 311 is the, you know, that Biella, Burquell, Steel Lane, Santa Rosa Middle, and then either LC Allen or Montgomery High School. Those are your, your schools on, on that based on the initial scenario. When we looked at, again, how do we, how do we get more than 3% in our reserve? How do we look at this in another way? It's the logistical side of, you know, that we could turn Santa Rosa Middle into a large elementary school. There are some things logistically that would need to happen. The biggest, the, the putting a playground there is not that difficult to have happen before August. The issue comes into looking at TKs and, and restrooms related to TK. So appropriate facilities there. So, so those are kind of, that's the logistical concern there. Capacity wise, it makes it actually much easier to do that scenario versus the scenario, versus the 311. Logistically, it's easier to actually close five elementaries and create the one large at Santa Rosa Middle, you know, combined with multiples. I, I know our Eric or Emmanuel or somebody else might want to speak a little more to that.
Yeah. And, and as we briefly review, as we were going through the original 311, and as we saw where students live, which is pretty much by Conningtown Mall, a map without Steel Lane is very difficult to make work. So I know that Steel Lane was part of the original, you know, group of three schools. And so that's why there is no map with Steel Lane. But that's pretty much the thing is given that Steel Lane is one of our biggest facilities and where students live, in order to make it work, we, we'll need to creatively use the other facilities that are available in order to meet, you know, the 3,000 student-ish of facility space that we need for our elementaries.
Can I ask a quick question?
Of course.
So, you know, I think the only way we would ever close Comstock is if we were going to a 712 on the west side. But if, if that happened, could Comstock also serve as a super elementary? Combining Monroe, Biella, Helen Lehman?
Yes. And I, I think we are ready to look at alternative scenarios. I, I, I think we, we are hinting. So yes, before, and then, yeah.
I'm just a little bit surprised about the, about Santa Rosa Middle being proposed in the original, like in our first stuff that we're talking about, when I haven't seen a suggestion or a request for that, both from all of this school consolidation stuff, as well as our previous meetings. So I just want to like put that out there. We can totally move on, but that is very surprising as a trustee up here who hasn't heard that suggestion. And I appreciate the explanation, but I just want to say that out loud.
Of course. Yeah. You know, like, and we were just trying to make the scenarios work and not propose a scenario where we know we don't have enough space for students, right? And then we have them, I don't know, like being, being outside. All right. But now I know that there are a lot of different scenarios that I think we've been hinting. Is there a question and then we can jump into them? Okay. So, and this is where my naming kind of falls apart altogether. And so just bear with me as we go through them. So I have three different scenarios that I prepared. One with Comstock as a super elementary school, some TK8 schools and then 712. So just to give you an idea of how the most radical 712 scenario might look like, that is the next sheet that you have on your, and it's called scenario 712. This scenario closes all middle schools and combines middle schools onto high school campuses, right? This is the most extreme, saves the most money because we don't operate any of our middle schools. However, if you look at the capacity, it will make it really difficult for us to fit middle school programs on our high school campuses as they are organized right now. So as you can see, our secondary enrollment is 9,400 students. And currently our facilities have space for only 9,390. Again, remember those is putting students everywhere that could be seen as a classroom, right? And so I know there is probably staff members in the audience that were at Santa Rosa High School when they had 2,000 students. However, stories, I weren't here, but the school was full, right? There were like, like one-way hallways and so on. So now think about that at all our five sites with middle schoolers. So, and this is the most extreme, right? I just wanted to show it, just to see, okay, if we go with the 712 where everything is, you know, 712 site. Now, as I was reading, as I was getting news on what other scenarios were suggested, I prepared other ones and these are named or dated by when I read them on the newspaper. So the first one is scenarios 128. That was because it was reported right after the, you know, the January 27th meeting from our school consolidation committee of a proposal. And the proposal was what if we turn Comstock into an elementary school? And I think was discussed at TK8. This scenario just says Comstock is a super elementary school, case six, and then do something, different ways to reorganize our middle and high schools. So this is what this scenario 128 is here. So as you can see here, this map is from the top clockwise, Hidden Valley, Proctor Terrace, Luther Burbank, Abraham Lincoln, Helen Lehman and Comstock as a super elementary site that combines James Monroe and part of Steel Lane. And while Biella will get absorbed by Helen Lehman and Lincoln. If you remember, that is where we have our biggest concentration of school age students, right? It's, it's in the little corner by Conningtown Mall. So as you can see here, by projections of capacity, we should have enough capacity in this configuration to have pretty much space for everyone. The attendance boundary here should work a little bit. There might be some redrawing that I might to do a little bit more work. But if there is more interest, I can dig more into this. And overall, it's about a $5 million or $5.1 million savings. So it's right in between the original 311 and the 311 with the super school as Santa Rosa Middle. So then the scenarios for middle and high school, oh, sorry. There is also another scenario for elementary school that instead does what we have done with the super elementary school when we actually joined Moore. So the next one is an elementary chewing the scenario where Comstock is at capacity, so about 900 students going there. And Helen Lehman takes over also the Lincoln attendance boundary. So this saves about $6.3 million, which is like the same savings as the other super middle school realizes, but it will close five elementary school instead of just three. So it's kind of like similar to what we saw where the super middle school absorbs two more sites. And then we have the middle and the high school scenarios. This followed the recommendations that I've read on the newspaper where the middle schools on the west side of town, mostly where we just have Comstock, closes because it's becoming an elementary school. And those middle school students are absorbed by Piner and LC Allen. Slater closes as well and those students are absorbed by Montgomery. And then we have two middle school programs operating at Santa Rosa Middle and Rincon Valley. And that decision is based on the pretty much capacity constraints where we still need to operating a middle school for, in the Rincon Valley area because we have about 700 students there. And we don't have space on the Maria Carrillo campus to absorb those students just yet. And the same thing for Santa Rosa High and Santa Rosa Middle. Santa Rosa Middle is projected to about 600 students and we don't have space for new 600 students at Santa Rosa High in this configuration. All the middle school programs, the boundaries are designed to have about 300 students in each of these 712 configurations. And the 300 comes from the need of having enough students that are in middle school to sustain a middle school program. So if you think about a FTE, usually teaches about 150 to, I think 170 something is our, 165, thank you. That, that, that is our contractual limit, right? So that is about the load. And so that would mean that we will have enough students, right? For example, taking math to have two math teachers. If we go below 300, we might go and look at fractional FTEs, student, you know, teachers driving around the middle school, which is not an ideal situation that we want to find ourselves in. So 300 is more or less how this was built at this time. Altogether, this saves $4 million from closures of middle schools and no savings at the high school level because all high school will continue to operate. So if you look at what we have on the board, we are a little bit short of, of the overall closure of about $2 million because of the continued operation of all our high school sites.
But again, it works the same way as the others, that there is that escalation factor. So it's close, but not, but there are, this is where we then get into some of the logistical issues because we might have enough space for- Because we might have enough space for classes. But then we have some of the things that we were talking about programmatically. There are many things that were brought up by this board as important or that have come up, obviously, as. Important when we think of of kids and their development and their involvement in school. And what makes it meaningful for them that would be difficult, especially in the first two to three years. Such as middle school athletics. It, I think. Yeah, yeah.
Some of the other challenges in addition to middle school athletics. Access to science labs, which would be, you know, you would need incredibly strategic. Scheduling in order to get access on a singular campus. Right now, our PE options at high school are very wide and and varied. And in order to bring in the seventh and eighth graders, some of those additional options need to be narrowed to allow for shared gym space and shared locker room space. So there's just some programmatic obstacles that would have to be overcome. There would also be the challenge of bell schedules. So one of the more effective ways to merge seventh, eighth graders with a traditional high school. Is to have overlapping bell schedules. But right now, our current high schools have some very creative bell schedules. That allow them to do some strategic instruction. And it would not necessarily allow for overlapping bell schedules the way they exist. So that would be something that would have to be worked with our bargaining units.
And so when we're talking about the shared locker rooms and the shared gym, we're not talking about at the same time. We're talking about strategically. How those would have to be scheduled, which then reduces the number of periods that we can offer. PE at the, you know, PE electives essentially at the at the high school level. So those would then, you know, something as a as an after or before, you know, zero period or. Seventh or eighth period, depending on what the number of periods are, what that looks like. You'd have flip-flopped lunch schedules. Essentially, in this type of model, yes, staggered, it's usually. A wing that's mostly dedicated to the junior high program and then you have some of that movement. It does, on the flip side. Provide opportunities for acceleration for students and also remediation for others who are struggling. So there are definitely. Pluses to it as well. It's just logistically with facilities and and these other things. It's. This is, I would say, the most difficult to pull off by August. That's when we when we think of facilities and logistics. We just need to be very clear and transparent that this is from the support team side, much more difficult. I understand the the reasoning for wanting to move forward with it. I just want to share that that's. When we're looking at what can we do by when and do it well. This is logistically pretty, pretty difficult.
And I think you heard at the outset, there would be an immediate impact to middle school athletics that would be. At the very least, a couple of years, there would be an impact to the scheduling around PE that would be affected across the board. Even though the zero period is something that oftentimes high school campuses use to expand access to larger groups or larger populated schools. We already use that at seventh and eighth grade, so it's not necessarily something that would be an option that we could turn to that would. Facilitate things too much. I think Eric could probably speak a little bit more to how quickly we'd be able to be bringing things up to speed so that like. The athletics and PE access to that. Full facilities across the board could be brought up to speed for all of our populations, but there would be an immediate impact to all of that. And I know that that's something. That we I think really value as a community as well.
Yeah, facilities would be, they're they're tough in this scenario, right? Programmatically, I can't speak exactly. That's not my area of how to run a seventh and eighth on a current high school campus, but. As my team and I have been talking about this for a little while now, thinking about the spaces that probably need to be added. A lot of what's in those capacity. Considers classrooms as classrooms, but that's not what's reality, right? On our campuses, a lot of. Classrooms are used as actual support spaces for kids, right? Counseling, speech therapy, there's restorative, there's all sorts of things in classrooms that aren't. That capacity doesn't count and you have to find space for them as well, right? So if we fill the school, which is great. But we don't have spaces for others. So we need to expand admin or or support spaces. We need. You know, locker rooms are potential problematic bathrooms for seventh and eighth graders become problematic. Cafeterias, some of our high schools don't have cafeterias, our middle schools do. I don't know if that's needed. But all of these things are also the most expensive things to build. None of them are cheap, but a lot of them are going to take a lot of time to develop. Nothing, none of these things I can provide by August. I can provide portable classrooms. But that's just the straight classroom. And if we exceed ten classrooms. We're not going to be exempt with Sequa and that will then delay it at least another year. So logistically, this one is is hard.
Hey Eric, just to follow up on that. So I know restrooms have been brought up quite a few times. Is it allowed or possible to, you know, like you see at concerts, the almost like a portable trailer type restrooms? Are those? Possible to bring in? Is it allowed?
I think we're allowed to do those temporarily, but not as a a permanent fix. And there are some legalities around how many toilets we need per student. That has to be available.
And I will share at a at a prior district when we had a major remodel at an elementary school, we did have to bring in. Those temporary port. A portable building essentially that that's a restroom. I don't know how that compares with the. If there's any consideration for that in that number of classrooms that we can temporarily expand, you know, that we can expand. If that has an impact on Sequa, that's something that we'll need to look into. If if this is the direction that that the board wants to go, these are things that we'll need to come back with you on further details.
So logistically, though, when we're talking about this is the worst one, is this the worst one, the? Couple going to a high school or all of them going to a high school?
This is with three high schools becoming seven through twelve. So this would be Elsie Allen, Piner and Montgomery becoming seven twelve. And leaving Santa Rosa High and Maria Carrillo High as nine through twelve. And that would be keeping open Rincon Valley Middle and Santa Rosa Middle.
And then secondly, when we're talking about portable bathrooms or portable buildings. We just heard on Wednesday that portables are kind of a no-go because of the fires. So portable bathrooms, since we don't have those currently at campuses, I. Feel like would be a bigger challenge.
Yes, we would, we would be looking to probably relocate. Once we found out what schools were not being operable next year. Whatever portables we have there to relocate them elsewhere, which. They're not in great shape, but they could be available.
And as far as the portable restrooms, we we don't have the, you know, the availability on that. We don't know. That's something that we'll have to bring back.
Thank you guys very much. So ultimately, here's where we're at. We have a very large number that we need to cut from our budget. That's what we have to do. That's what we're tasked with making a vote on in two weeks. Today's study session. Is trying to get viable information of what is that, what can we do, what is feasible? We can see the numbers, we can do the math, but what can we actually do? And that's where we really need to get to. What is actually viable, not what the pipe dreams are, not what the visions are, not going to be amazing, but what can be done? In the next few months to actually save money. And still provide opportunities for our staff and our students. What we need to be looking at is, here's a number that needs to be cut. What works where, what's going to fit where? What are we doing well and how can we expand that? Because ultimately, we need to attract and retain students. To continue to operate as a school district. What do we need to do better and where do we have the space to do that better at? Those are answers that we need for these questions. Before we can make a decision, and and we're up against making a decision, taking the vote in two weeks. And I'm getting a lot, lot cloudier. And getting a lot more diversions of sounds great, but we can't do it. Logistically, maybe. Programmatically, never. We are not a district that only provides classrooms for students. We provide so much more and that's what's so beautiful and amazing about this district. I cannot. In good faith, take everything else away from our district just to put students in classrooms. To get us where we need to get. So this has to be thought through holistically and we really need to know. What can we do? What is going to actually work? And look at those numbers. And if they aren't the big numbers we need, are they numbers close enough that'll get us through the next year? Because ultimately, it may be too big of a number and too big of a task to get this done. In the timeframe we're asking.
So I'm just being time checker. One, we have one hour left. Do you want to speak to that in terms of what we've seen in terms of three one one? The five one one and the we'll call it now scenario one two eight. In terms of, we talked a little bit about the hiccups with one two eight. In terms of what can be done by August. Or we can go into scenario two oh six, but I think since we have an hour left, we should tackle that first. And then can there be a variance of the two? And if we do want to get to a seven twelve eventually. What can we do by August to walk in that direction? Is that kind of where we're going? Perfect.
And actually, like. I'm concerned about going back to all of these scenarios because I think one of the things I'm not seeing here is actually some scenarios that we presented on Wednesday. And so I almost wonder if the board should be spending more time expressing our thoughts on scenarios that. Were more interested in actually hearing more about instead of going back through several that I don't. I'm not sure that I've heard and interested in. So because I. We're at less than an hour and I feel like we're going to be using that extra study session you mentioned, so.
How about you start with that? What we can do by August in terms of what you've seen?
It's it's a tough question to answer right now, like in, like in general terms. Without having a concrete plan, right? So if you say three one one is what we decide, right? You know, or if you want to say, okay, let's try to say three one one is the plan that we want to go with. What can we do by August? I think that is more concrete rather than telling you. In general, this is what I think we could do by August because it's really tough because it's so context specific to what we decide, right? So if you give us the direction of saying, we want to have a seven twelve, right? District moving forward. Now, we can tell you, this is what we think we can do by August. This is what we can think we can do in by next year and this is what we can do in three years, right? You know, without like some sort of parameters to work with, right? It's just going to be a pine sky and say, well, I think I can do this by August. Which is probably tough families where they are going to school, but I, but it's it's kind of like difficult without like.
That's what I'm trying to say is I think. If I feel like we're going, we should use this time for us to give you concrete ideas. That we can get back. And then I'm. I don't want to say this, but I'm thinking we're not running towards the next meeting being the nineteenth here, but. Because I'm not seeing the concrete ideas that have already been presented or public hearing right now. So that's.
Hundred percent, yeah, and you know, and and it's difficult to, you know. If if you want me to work on like, how would we implement all of these plans and then knowing that, you know, seventy or eighty percent of the work will be tossed away.
I don't want you to do that.
Instead of having to really focus on one thing and get it done, right? And so that's that's really like where's the challenge that I can come up with a lot of ideas, but then what's going to happen and then the the planning is going to come up. Lisa is laughing because she knows like how many plans she saw coming out from the office, so.
And I guess one other question I have is. In an environment where we're coming back in X amount of time. Would you have the ability for you and Eric to work together to actually figure out additional capacity at sites under scenarios? So if we gave you scenarios that were under capacity needs, would there, how many days would you need to figure out how many portables? So that we can have that because we can't, that data is really important with the elementary especially.
Hundred percent. And at least with, you know, like if we say, let's really focus on two scenarios, right? Whatever you want to pick. I think. By the nineteenth, I know.
No, it needs to be.
Yeah, maybe, you know, like. Guess five days. I I I don't want to sign up for me to work on the three day, but it's just fine.
So so we also have timelines. We have to post. Post things and be able to actually compile and it's not just us, it's other people involved in that. And so I think that we had. When when we were looking at when we could have availability, we were looking at truly, I think we put out there next Friday morning as a time that we. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Because it's going to take us some time, but the the more concrete, again, the fewer scenarios. Makes it much easier for us to come back with concrete information because otherwise it's, and that's why we have. So much kind of out there with nebulous information is because we, it's too hard to narrow down. Specific enough to bring to bring back some some concrete information for you.
I do want to point out, though, that, and again, this is not a helpful comment to the public. However, it needs to be said that we have three brand new board members. And our very first conversation about school closures was two days ago and we have to make this decision in less than two weeks. And we all have jobs. And it's absolutely mind-boggling to me that we weren't pulled in when everyone saw that we were not opposed by anyone. We weren't pulled into study sessions. I attended absolutely every one of the closure. Things, whether that be online or in person. But this timeline, I understand the pink slips too. I do understand the timeline. But this could have been done so much better. So I'm all for making the hard decisions, but this is crazy. Period. Like we we will do this and we'll make it happen, but this could have been done so much better and transparently and with the. With the community's support.
Trustee Caston, can I ask what concrete scenario do you want to see that you're not seeing here?
So on Wednesday, I presented this scenario and I'm going to kind of reiterate it. Well, if we're at the point where we want to reiterate scenarios that we want to see. Okay, so. That's what I presented on Wednesday, which is essentially what I'm going to say, although with one minor edit because of the data you've presented. So I'd like to see a scenario for the elementaries that maintains Monroe, Lincoln, Burbank, Proctor and Hidden Valley. With understanding of the additional capacity that we could move on there from available. Portables. Like to see the that same scenario with one that has Montgomery, Piner, Elsie. As seven twelve, and this is the change from what I said on Wednesday night. Santa Rosa High plus Ridgeway as seven twelve contemplating moving Ridgeway. And. On Wednesday, I said.
So sorry, just clarification when you're saying Ridgway. Okay, so you're saying Ridgway on a separate campus.
I'm, yeah, and then Ridgway would become a part of Santa Rosa High four seven twelve model.
Okay, and are you saying only Ridgway? I I I'm, I want to understand the exact parameters that you're asking for.
So the adjacent properties. I mean, if you want to throw in the district office location. I'll leave that to you. But. Because we do have adult ed classrooms on the the district office, so I don't, I'm not contemplating that. So I'm saying Ridgway, the current Ridgway campus. Maintaining the adult ed classrooms at the district office as a separate concept. So Ridgway and Santa Rosa High's campuses become one campus. And the capacity of a seven twelve is analyzed with those together.
Thank you. That's helpful.
Yeah. And then within this, a variation that has either additional capacity being added to Creo. And assuming Rincon Valley or maintaining Rincon Valley Middle separately and having Creo be a nine twelve. I think I need to see both those options because I'm not sure we could hit that ten percent. Number that we're talking about at Creo to make it a seven twelve for capacity.
That's where we would have a problem.
And then. I had listed and I emailed them to you already, so I'm not going to go entirely through it, but the options of where we would move special programs and charters. But for these numbers, recognizing that we can go back and look at lotteries and wait lists. and have an idea of how many students would be admitted to impact capacity at other locations. Because if we're, if we move French and CCLA to middle school campuses as T6s and they're able to expand, we have waitlists from this last year where 70 to 100 students were turned away. And we know which of those students were in our district, and that would impact our overall capacity discussion. And so I need to understand, because expanding those is also from a fiscal standpoint, a same-year budget impact on ADA, because charters are, how general charters are funded differently, and at least I'm saying your words here. But because of how that difference is, that is an immediate year.
It, it is, with an exception, with a caveat to that, and that is that there's a funding mechanism. When you're looking at LCFF, you, there are, when you have transfers in and out between the district and charters, it actually doesn't give you that same-year recognition. So I just want to, I, I want to.
And that's the information I want to have back.
Yeah, because that will, that can have some, some big impacts that, that you don't necessarily realize any. You may actually see a, a potential loss from that rather than an increase. So I, I just want to say we have to be careful with that.
But it's also why I want to have the data come back, because we've had this conversation, and so I want to see it in the scenario, so that we understand if, how what we're doing impacts us. And within what I just said for that scenario, ideally, I would see a place where we were making the moves over three years. So we were going 7-12, not moving the, the charter and special programs. And I'm also still contemplating Ridgway's program becoming 7-12, which would also have an impact to be able to admit more students. But year one, I would, it would be ideal if we were moving 7-12 for a phase that is A, achievable, and B, gets us, you know, within the neighborhood and non-charter and non-special programs. And then in year two, because a lot of those conversions are going to be middle school conversions being, adding TK and bathroom needs, and a lot of those types of things, those being a year-two transition. And then in year three, finalizing, you know, whatever remaining parts we need to move around and improve to make it logical. But I think we need to get to a place where we're seeing scenarios that are actually timelined before we can make a responsible decision, so.
I think, I think what we need to do now in the next 45 minutes is, as a board, come to some agreement on which, what version of the 3-1-1 and what version of the 7-12 that we want our team to explore further.
I don't, I don't have a version of the 3-1-1 that I want them to explore further. I need to, I want to see more of the iterations on the feasibility around these 7-12 and elementary capacity issues. And I mean, one of my big concerns here is I'm looking at many scenarios that aren't the scenarios we talked about on Wednesday, and I feel like we're not advancing our conversation right now. So I'm a little frustrated by that, but I also recognize this was less than 36 hours later, so that's not on you. Individually, I, I appreciate you all, but this isn't what we talked about on Wednesday, so I'm still, in a lot of ways, at the same place I was on Wednesday, because I don't have the data to be able to move past it.
I, I do see the connection from our conversations Wednesday to these scenarios. I, I agree that not everything is presented, but I don't want to discredit the work that's been done here. I think these are, these are connected to what we discussed.
Can I, can I just like follow up a second? So the, your scenario for elementary, sorry, you went very fast, and I think you just mentioned four schools, Proctor Terrace?
Five. So, and it's included in the email, in the email I'd already sent, so it's maintaining Monroe, Lincoln, Burbank, Proctor, Hidden Valley, with the additional analysis of capacity that would be able to be added from portables, because that will not get us to capacity.
I think that was scenario elementary 3-1-1, I, I, I think there is a scenario with that. Or, or am I missing, unless you wanna, unless there is no Lehman?
The.
So the.
Yeah, there's no Lehman.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's the difference.
I can already tell you it's likely not gonna work because of where students live. We need to have facilities on the northwest side of town. And so a school without, unless we have Hidden Valley really coming down on the other side of the freeway and having about 700 students driving up the hill to Hidden Valley, which, which we can try to do, but it's Lehman by itself will be a capacity when it's on the map.
And, and that's a part of why I want to make sure it's combined with Eric, because when I, I've toured every single school and met with parent groups in this process, and having walked these five campuses, several of them have space that is not currently used for athletic fields, not currently used, that could receive additional classrooms. And so I, I agree with you, it wouldn't work looking at these numbers, but understanding our ability to move buildings temporaries within the context of those five. And I mean, Hidden Valley is a beautiful example, right? They have a significant amount of space on the back of the.
So, so the issue with Hidden Valley is that in order to move portables there, we would have to do the trenching study. So for that to happen by August, it, we wouldn't be able to increase capacity there.
The setback area already has buildings in it. There's a lot of area outside of that setback.
No, with, the, the, what we have, our experience with, with DSA is that if it's identified in the zone, any part of that camp, that, there's enough of that campus that's identified in the zone that we have to, even if it's somewhere else identified outside of that 50 feet, we still have to do the trenching study. It, it doesn't matter.
So of the five sites, what the feasibility is for the extra capacity? And then I think we need to actually get more detail on that, because my understanding from DSA on other projects like hospitals and judicial buildings is that it does not apply if the parcel touches it. It's only if your proposal.
We're, we're different with, with schools, it's different. We, we have tighter requirements as, as far as that, that piece of it.
I also want to make a comment. I need to get a little bit more information, and is the confirmed though, Grace is a program within Piner, but Ridgway has its own CDS code, and it's technically a continuation school and has requirements, and it's a 16-plus school. So it may not be able to be combined onto a campus of 7-12.
So my, for, for the movement, for the, for having an alternative continuing education option, this may be where we get into the year one, year two, year three. I would like to see us discussing from a what we're offering perspective, moving Ridgway to a location where it could become a 7-12. And then based on the logistics of that, if we need to file for new codes, whatever we need to do, we would do those things, and does that make it a year-two thing to expand or a year-three? That would be what I hope to hear. And I'm not talking about moving Grace as a part of that, that's not a part of what I'm contemplating. I look for a recommendation from you all of two, what, what would be best with that. But having the Ridgway program be on a site where it can grow.
Yeah.
And whatever legal mechanisms we need to do to make it able to grow is what I'm hoping for.
So, I hear from, from you that you are not interested in any version of the 3-1-1, but I want to hear from the rest of the board. Trustee Kirby.
So they, I've been looking through a lot of these scenarios. So for, for the 3-1-1 scenario, we utilized a lot of the schools that were both in the first tier and second tier, except when it came to the high schools. So I was wondering why we only did Elsie and Montgomery and not Santa Rosa to look at the, the possibility of that, because they are since pretty located, can easily be fed out to all the other schools, and they are probably the highest, potentially the highest savings. So just to be fair, and I guess to look at all of our possibilities, can we run, run that in addition to Elsie and Monte? That's, that's the main thing I had on 3-1-1.
I was curious about that as well. I'm also wondering about the impacts of closing Santa Rosa Middle but not Santa Rosa High. The mismatch, it seems to me it would make more sense to close both or close Slater and Montgomery, just in terms of the movement, the feeders. Trustee Jenkins?
I would like the same.
Trustee Kirby.
And trustee McNally, President McNally.
Trustee Delatorre.
I'm not excited about the 3-1-1 model, but I do need to see those numbers for comparison, because ultimately, we have a huge budget deficit we're trying to overcome. So I cannot reiterate enough that we are the only show in town to represent the high schools, because we are the only high school district. So it is imperative that we keep that in our mind, which is why the 7-12 model was interesting, but I'm not interested in one model. I don't think any one of these models fits and makes sense. And I'm curious as to what the combination of these models looks like. Does a 7-12 work at Elsie and Comstock? Does a 7-12 work at any other high school campus due to capacity, due to student enrollment numbers? I'm also, when I look at this, speaking specifically to the high schools, I'm not interested in putting a bunch of work in to save a high school that ultimately our families don't want to go to. So we have to consider that as well, as harsh as it sounds. How much time and effort can we put into trying to save the school if our families will not send their students there? So is there something we can put at that school site that students want to attend and families want to send their students to? What can we build to attract and retain students so it is a full, utilized campus? And it, because if we don't do that, we're having this conversation next year of closing a school that we fought so hard to save. And I want to avoid that. So I need to see a combination of these scenarios of anybody. My main thing is what's viable, what can we do? I need to hear that. I can't just be telling you, these are my four schools and these are my two schools, and tell me the numbers. I need to know what's actually possible so that we can move forward with this.
Let me ask quickly, when we originally talked about the concept of this meeting, it was discussed that we'd be able to have the computers open and we'd be able to run variations on some of these scenarios relatively quickly. Is, is there a way to move to that model? Because I feel like if we, because I, I'm, I'm not saying I don't want to see another version of a 3-1-1 because I don't want to see it. I'm saying I don't want to see it because I don't want to end up here again and having you had not had enough time to look at other scenarios that I, I think are more feasible, because similar to some of these other comments that have been made. For me, it's, we're not going to save any money if we don't capture ADA. And some of these scenarios to me are going to result in us losing the students and losing the savings. So how can we get more flexible in another session to be able to have variations in real time?
So he's trying to get into it. That was one of the issues we ran into, is that he was not able to connect when we first came in to be able to be ready and a little more flexible. It still takes a few minutes to run those. I don't, are you able to access now?
Okay, so we did bring the 3-1-1 scenarios with Elsie Allen and what that would look like, and the 3-1-1 with Montgomery High School, and that would, that would look like in terms of fiscal. Question, is either one of those 3-1-1s, either with Elsie Allen or Monte, possible facilities-wise by August?
As far as the reductions?
Yes.
Both of those? And if we were to do the same thing and just look at what the savings would be with Santa Rosa High, would that 3-1-1 with Santa Rosa High be possible by August?
I'd have to look at Dr. Bardelli's numbers at Santa Rosa High. We haven't looked at that one before.
Okay, but the other two that we brought forth are possible by August?
Yes.
Okay.
So, I'm, I'm still interested in 7-12, but it's sounding, it's sounding unrealistic at a large scale. I'm, I'm wondering, I'm interested in seeing more detail on a 3-1-1 scenario that makes Elsie into our pilot 7-12. That recaptures the 7-8 enrollment that we lost from Cook. It lets us pilot that program, but we still get the cuts that we need. Trustee Kirby, go ahead.
So I, I did have a scenario very similar to that, incorporating some of the 7-12, if I can kind of put it forward. So just starting down low, I, my scenario that I kind of came up with, or with some help, is closing Lincoln, Biella, Brookhill, and Steel Lane. Closing Santa Rosa Middle and Slater. Ridgway, either putting that on the Elsie campus perhaps, with a 7-12 model, I'm hearing that that may not be possible, but potentially either moving that to Elsie or having it reopened back on other campuses as the small necessaries.
Can you please repeat the combination? I think I've got 90%. But go ahead.
Closing Lincoln, Biella, Brookhill, and Steel Lane as the elementaries. Closing Santa Rosa Middle to be used in the next, my next thing was, we'll be moving Cesar Chavez, French American School and the, and the Charter Arch School onto the Santa Rosa Middle campuses, campus. Does that sound right?
Yeah, I think it's too small. They're, they're pretty large, that, those, the.
I don't think there's capacity for that combination at Santa Rosa Middle.
For, for those, for those three? What about if you don't move the arch school, can the other two, the French American and?
CCLA is, it fills up a bigger school at the old Cook campus already, so you couldn't combine that and move it.
Together, they will need to be on a high school campus or an equivalent to.
Yeah.
Okay. But then on the 7-1-1 model, I was, of course, trying to say, hey, let's create a, you know, a 7-1-1 model at Elsie, like President McNally was talking about to, as a, as a, as a pilot program, there you go. I am a pilot. Good job. Thanks. And then, in the following year, looking at maybe adding in the Montgomery. If, if we see its success at Elsie, then the following year, hopefully establishing a 7-1-1 at Montgomery. But anyway, those were some of the ideas I was throwing around.
Is there any way we could pilot 7-1-1 at Elsie? Just keep all high schools open, maybe close four elementaries and find those other cuts elsewhere?
Just, just to clarify, you were saying close four elementary?
Close, close more than three elementaries.
Any middle?
I guess close one middle, close Santa Rosa Middle, keep all high schools open, and try to find the cuts that would have come from a high school somewhere else.
And put Elsie 7-1-1.
Yeah. And then possibly in the future, cut more middle schools and create more 7-12s.
It might be really difficult, because that is similar to the scenario now 1-2-8, but without the cut to Slater, so it saves even less than what we have on the board, which will leave us probably like $4, $5 million short of a 3-1-1 scenario. Now, we could do a 3-1-1 with a 7-1-1 pilot at Elsie Allen. Now, if you look at the 3-1-1 attendance boundary for middle school, the attendance boundary for Comstock is very big, because it covers pretty much all the attendance boundary for Elsie Allen. And we know that families there have a hard time going cross-town, right? And so having a neighborhood school where they can go from seventh grade on might be a good option for us to recapture the middle school students that we lost when we closed down Cook. That might also though require us to relocate the traditional middle school program that currently is housed at CCLA and moving it back on a traditional campus, which will likely be Elsie Allen. And I believe if you see the numbers, it's about 200 students.
Would there, would there be any savings from removing those seventh and eighth graders from CCLA?
I do believe it, at least the, the non-dual immersion, definitely, because that's one of the areas where we really struggle. Because that's one of the areas where we really struggle staffing-wise, where we have to, you know, our, our class sizes. We, we struggle to meet the need there with the shrinking number of neighborhood kids who go to CCLA. So yes, and I, I guess one of the questions is that we have to look into is it would likely, it, it may require a revision to the charter. So there's a process for that, but I think we can start the, some, some of the changes. At, at least looking at the numbers of what that, of what that would look like. And my question is, is the...
I actually don't think it would require a revision to the charter because the charter says that neighborhood students can apply, but it doesn't say that they have to. So by opening the ELSI 7-12, if those students choose not to apply to go to CCLA and they choose to go to ELSI, it's not violating the charter.
But that would be leaving the charter students in seventh and eighth grade on the CCLA campus.
I don't know if, if this is the time like to throw out ideas, but we also have French American where their middle school students are actually housed at Herbert Slater. So there might be a similar agreement between the new middle school program at ELSI Allen and the CCLA middle school program where we move the whole seventh and eighth ensemble to ELSI, similarly to how French American houses their seventh and eighth grade at Slater, where they have half of the in French and half of the day in the general population where they take any class they want. It could be a similar setup, but housed at the ELSI Allen middle school campus. I, I, I've now been in a meeting where this was discussed, so but, you know, that could also be an option and modeled after our order.
So it's a very creative suggestion. Numbers would need to be run. I think we're very interested in finding out what those numbers would be because ultimately, whatever we do is going to only work or not work, depending on who shows up to school next year. So I love the word pilot when we talk about a program at ELSI Allen because that allows us to build a program that we feel is going to attract and retain and support the student population. And we can build it in a way hoping for success that perhaps we can model something in other campuses that would work. My biggest issue with 7-12 was teachers is middle school teachers really enjoy being, being middle school teachers. They've trained and worked to be middle school teachers, and that's a lot different than a high school teacher. And if you put them on one campus, sometimes it doesn't translate very well. And the students are the ones that get the short end of that stick. But if we pilot it, we can build and design it that where it's much more integrative and building opportunities, which ultimately, that's the number one word that needs to come out of all of this is what are the opportunities that we're looking for? And if we do not hit the exact numbers we're looking for, can we get close enough to either get a better budget forecast or find cuts in other places to still make things work?
So I, I'm hearing multiple scenarios that sound to me like they can end up millions of dollars under the target. And if we could agendize the next conversation as such that we would, we wouldn't be saying then go find cuts in other places because if we're going to go find an extra $3 or $4 million in additional district cuts, we haven't even had the conversation yet of what the district cuts are going to look like. So we don't even know what the magnitude that would mean. And I, I need to have, if we're not hitting our numbers that we're talking about, then I really need to understand what that meant. And in order to be able to finish this conversation, so having them bifurcated wouldn't work if we're not going to actually go to the target cuts we're talking about. Also recognizing, going back to the point of we need to attract students to be in our school, that we still need to hit a net reduction. And so if we're going to talk about reinvesting in academics and enrichment in those types of areas, we're already cut from and we need to actually grow and increase our quality. Will we be able to do that? Or are we going to keep losing more students and continuing down this death spiral?
So I, I want to jump in right there because actually, when I hear things like that, the direction that we were going, that actually gets my mind going because I can start thinking of what we can combine programs and we were, where we already have efforts focused. And I can see things, my mind starts to work where we can combine immersion programs, where we can, I know where our teachers are already and where we have strands of programs that we're developing and we're building. So we start making decisions, I can start moving. So that, that's very helpful, yeah.
And I'm just saying, if we can broaden the agendizing of this for when we come back, if we're, because if we come under, we're going to be coming in the district cuts and saying $3 or $4 million. So you're seeing the strands of those combinations. But if we're $3 million more on district office cuts, not all of our district office cuts are administrators, right? You have services you're providing. There's services that students receive on, on sites.
Daisy Zoom can't hear if you're not using. Thank you.
For the, on the scenario 128 with Comstock super, as a super elementary, how many elementaries are we closing in that scenario?
It's still five. Well, it depends. There is one with three and one with five. Five. Basically, the only schools that are left on the map are Comstock, Helen Lehman, Burbank, Proctor Terrace, and Eden Valley. Sorry, that one keeps James Moro back, I think. Yeah. This is just where the students are located. That area is really difficult to serve without Steel Lane. And that's what it really comes down to. So, you know, suggestion from the editor Kirby of maybe keeping Steel Lane might be allowing us to reshuffle a little bit on, on this other side of town.
And that super elementary concept, we're looking to close those elementary sites and move those students and staff to one larger site.
That's, that's correct.
So I think that's something important that is assumed and most people know, but not a lot of people are hearing that, that when we're talking about closing those elementaries, we're trying to find a larger site to consolidate them onto one campus. And that might make that a little easier to swallow for some people, that we're just trying to find a bigger space to provide those opportunities and save some money from no longer operating multiple locations.
And part of the savings will come from consolidating classrooms that are currently not used at 100%. But most cuts will come from support staff that's not instructional. So most teachers will move with their students to the new sites. And marginal, you know, marginal cuts. For example, when we have combo classes that now might not need anymore because they can go to a regular grade, right? Once we have more students under one roof. And so those are kind of like the cuts that are building to the projections. And the 15% Lisa mentioned on instructional comes at the margins where we can either fill a full FTE or combine combo classes or, you know, classes that maybe are with fewer students than what they should have been because we don't have enough to have a full class or, you know, two full classes or something like that.
Yeah, so we've seen numbers of what it costs currently to operate that campus. We know that because those are bills we're paying. We're seeing projected numbers over the costs. Savings would be in understanding that it's typically a 40% of that actual cost being spent. If we plan this correctly and do this right, is there a potential that that savings number would go up? Depending on where you put students and staff and how you design those combinations and consolidations. Is there a potential that instead of the 40% of actual cost, we might save 48% or 53%?
That's going to depend on, I mean, that, it could go either way by a little bit. As far as, do I think it's going to be a huge swing like that in the first year or two? No. I think that 40% is, is it pretty close within a percentage or two, one way or the other? In the, in the long run, as, you know, we improve systems, you know, there are lots of things that can happen in the long run. And remember, what we have to do is, yes, there's a number that we have to hit right now to be able to have enough space for the students that we currently have. What, you know, what we haven't really talked about a whole lot is right sizing for the students that we will have in 2930, you know, and, and after. And so I think we want to be really careful in the things that we bring to you as maybe it is stepped, you know, as we, as we can. We need to have those contingency plans so that we aren't back here. And it's okay if we continue to decline, then what's the next move three years down the road?
Absolutely. And what we're really interested in is not making these huge cuts and continuing to operate as we have been the last five years. We not only need to make these cuts, but we want to see things done differently and better moving forward so that we're not continually hemorrhaging our budget on things that don't need to be.
If I, I want to add something. I mean, I'm, I'm sitting here pretty quietly, but part of the original proposal, when we brought up the school closures and how much we had to do in school closures, remember, we were trying to hit a goal of 20 million. And the school closures were supposed to be 12 million of that. The other 8 million is staff cuts. So as you talk about what if we don't hit the 12 million, we still committed to the county that we were going to cut 20 million. So anything that we don't hit in school closures, that's more staff cuts. Any schools that we don't close means more employees, more teachers, more staff that we need to staff those schools, which means less employees that we can cut, but we still have to cut because we still have to meet that $20 million. So as you are considering, and, you know, I don't want to be the bummer here, but as you are considering, the money has to come from somewhere. And yes, it's coming from district office cuts, which will be coming to the board. But it's also, you know, it's, it's got to come from somewhere. And it's going to have to come from people. So as you're thinking about what are we going to do and what kind of programs do we want to have? And how are we going to get kids to come to our schools? You also have to think that right now, we need to cut $20 million. And whatever the balance that we don't cut in schools is going to come from people.
And just to clarify on that, when you say people, we're not talking about just, that 8 million is not just district office. That would be more people at the sites. So our sites would be becoming less staffed.
Yes.
Yes, and one of the, you know, we, we have, we weren't able to get all the way down to what would be the savings in unrestricted versus restricted, you know, total for district office. The majority of the district office is restricted funded, funding. There's about $12 million in unrestricted funding in staffing for centralized service in district office. So it's not, you know, I know that, that that is the, you know, let's cut there. It's actually less in that way than, than, than most people realize. There, there really isn't that much there to, to cut in that way. There are some things that we can reduce on the restricted side that will have an impact, that things could be shifted. But still, it's not going to get us to the $20 million or even close. And we still have things that have to happen. It's not that the district office is not supporting school sites. We just aren't there on the school site. So there are things that we legally have to do that if we're going to improve those services, we have to have the people to do it.
Yeah, like, for example, it's, it's customary and cultural here that when a school site needs support, they turn to Ed Services to have somebody go to the site immediately to support them. That's not going to be the case moving forward because we're reducing every year the cuts. Most of the cuts actually come from Ed Services. And so next year, we're going to have three or four fewer people. And so when sites are looking for additional support, it just won't be there. And that's just the reality, so.
And, and it's going to be difficult all the way, all the way around. I just wanted to make sure that, that when we're talking about this extra $3 to $4 million, I, I don't know that we find it at, at, at the district office, a portion of it. But again, the impact of that is actually substantial.
I am curious. I wanted to kind of piggyback on what trustee Kirby said about Santa Rosa as well as combining with President McNally. If we do, I'm curious to see how it would, how it would pan out if there was a pilot on ELSI absorbing the middle from CCLA and then really looking at the numbers for Santa Rosa. Because like, like was stated, it being so central, then we don't lose quadrants, right? I'm so concerned about losing quadrants of our entire community. But I'm also curious, if it was Santa Rosa, those facilities, I know we're not like, not, I'm not talking about selling them, but some of them are, I mean, all of them are absolutely beautiful. Excuse me, they're all beautiful. But I'm wondering if they could be used for district stuff as far as, you know, they have, we've been having all of our meetings there. Then we wouldn't have to use this area as well as the sporting stuff and the theater. And they have some amazing facilities that I feel like would be really beneficial to use as a district as a whole. And I'm, I'm curious if that's even an option during a transition times. I mean, how cool would it be if we had like sport tournaments at Santa Rosa High because they have the facilities? And then it's a neutral zone for everyone because it is so centralized?
So some considerations. And, and I, I appreciate, I appreciate that piece. But I know that Eric would love the consolidated space for our graduation if we looked at that piece of it. Just, I mean, I know that you didn't mention that one, but that, that's just been something that, that we've talked about. As far, we wouldn't necessarily realize all of the operational savings. So that, so that's one piece to consider is, is there are still things that, that would happen. So it would be a partial savings on that. And then the other piece, I wasn't sure if you were talking about using it, you know, as converting to the district office. If the cost of renovating that school in particular for that would be huge. It would be substantially more than building a, a, a new facility. But I don't know if you want to speak to that at all, Eric?
Yeah, that's correct. Anytime we start knocking over walls and doing massive renovation, we'll, we'll trigger seismic upgrades and that will pretty much take it way out of, way out of cost.
Yeah, but if we think about impact on residence, right? When we think about boundary, I don't know if you have the projections here, but Santa Rosa High currently, as the boundary is drawn, right, with those two weird islands, they, the residential base is actually the smallest of all our schools. They serve about 900 students and all the other ones are transfers in, right? And so, and they get to about, you know, I think they are 1,500 this year. And so they do get a lot of students coming in. They will need to go back to their home schools. But as you were saying, it's the central area. There may be, I, I think there was one of these scenario that I ran back in, I don't know, 10 years ago when I started working on these maps. But that, you know, like, as you were saying, we can go back to four quadrants and the map, it looks better. It doesn't have like weird corridors where we need to try to get a quadrant to the other side of town or something like that. So I can have that done like pretty quickly alongside the 7-12 at ELSI Allen.
So we're running low on time. I want to really quick say what I'd like to see and then hear what we all think of it. I want to see a scenario where ELSI is a pilot for 7-12. We close Santa Rosa Middle and Santa Rosa High. I want to see the same thing, ELSI pilot, but we close Montgomery and Slater. And I want the 128 or something similar where we have multiple 7-12s. I want to see those three scenarios. I saw trustee Kirby's hand.
All right, just had a couple of quick follow-ups, hopefully. Somebody said something about Ridgeway only being nine or 11-12. So I know previously, yeah, previously, this is a long time ago. I've been here a long time. But I know we had Lewis Opportunity School at some point that was 7-12 and then got, started as 11-12 and then got expanded, right? And then went away.
But yeah, we, we still have that CDS code, don't we?
I mean, so it is possible, right?
We have Leyla.
There, yeah, so there's a difference in ed code between continuation school. So that there's very specific language around what continuation program is. Doesn't have to be a separate school. It can be a program, but there's really specific parameters. And there is an age level for that versus just an alternative school, which is very different. That's where you have the 7-12. That's where you have the seven through twelve.
Okay. All right. Thanks for clarifying that. Also, just quickly, the break, oh, I know I asked you about the district office, breakdown, the salaries. You're still working on that hopefully. Okay. And can you break it down also the classify? Do you guys have the classified and non-classified? Yeah, different classes. I know we'll be looking at that. Also, you talked about the projections, you know, the way I look at it, it said like, I think fourteen hundred less students that we're anticipating like only five years from now. So yeah, it's definitely something to keep in mind that we are continuing to shrink. So we just, we need to be, I want to continue to be mindful about that. And then lastly, just, just to make sure that we're capturing all the, the public comment and input that we've had. I never really saw any results about the surveys that were put out as well as the town hall. I mean, was that just meant for the committee or is that meant for the public as a whole?
We put it out on the website and
I didn't know if we were going to get official report on that or just, just?
We shared the raw data. There were, we, you know, the, the, all we did was with the dots, kind of where most of them landed. And then we just gave kind of the raw data in terms of, and this, and the survey was also, it's included in this report.
So just to steer the public to that if they
Yeah, it's in here.
Okay, thanks.
So additional information around what us not hitting the mark would look like to cuts at school sites. So I think that's a part of the conversation. It's like, I think we're thinking if we keep this, if we don't close the schools, they're going to stay the same. And so, and the rest will come from the district or some nebulous program out there. So understanding the interrelationship to if we don't do it with site reductions, what are further reduction in our quality of education is going to look like? So that's a big concern for me that I would need to understand in some of these models. And then I'm concerned because we're making all these decisions within the context of very detailed data around expenses and with very little to no information around revenue. And the baseline assumption of all these is that revenue stays flat, flat. And revenue is students going to school. So when I hear scenarios where we're taking our largest attraction, school that enables parents going to work to have convenience and dropping their kids off like Santa Rosa High, I hear revenue because then we're no longer on the one-on-one quarter. I hear students going to a school that's going to be convenient. And that's not necessarily driving out to the quadrants. So I don't know what information we have, whether it's the survey, whether it's anything else, but for us to be doing this without an understanding of how these decisions are going to impact our attendance, our demographic losses are not remotely close to the number of students that are not currently going to our schools. You know, we have over a thousand students in out of district schools in our city. We have hundreds going to neighboring schools that are offering higher quality programs and things that we're not currently offering. And I don't see those numbers going down if we're not taking actions to improve that quality. And so we, having that understanding, that interrelationship to whatever extent you can is going to be important. We've got to also have the revenue side of this conversation present.
Lisa, can you summarize back what the team heard in terms of what we're doing? I didn't capture yours. Yours, you went fast. I know she had three and I didn't capture them all.
I am planning to go back and re-listen to some of this because I lost details along the way. But I know that it's bringing back additional details related to, including in some of our projections, the, so the issue is we have, so yes, we can run what we think a, you know, an additional five percent decline in attendance or something like that is based on the current projections for revenues. However, we're also running right now getting, doing our second interim projection. So as we're presenting numbers coming forward, you're going to see conflicting information. And so I want to, I just want to be clear about that because we would be running this based on our first interim projections, not on our second, because we're in the middle of doing that. So two weeks from next, you know, after that, you'll then start, you'll see different numbers that are related to second interim. So I just, I want to make that clear so that the public is not saying, wait a minute, why did this number change? It's because we're dealing with two different data sets based on the information that we currently have to be able to run this in a timely manner versus what will be coming out based on the governor's projection. So just want to clarify that. Several different combinations. Thank you, Stacy. So a three one one plus a pilot seven twelve at LC, a three one one plus Santa Rosa High School and Santa Rosa.
So, sorry.
Yeah, thank you. Please.
The second was running a three one one that closes Santa Rosa High or a three run one that closes Montgomery or a three one one that closes LC. Then there was a four and a one with a seven twelve at LC. There was LC being a seven twelve with the closure being Santa Rosa Middle plus Santa Rosa High to keep the feeder closure more consistent. And LC being a seven twelve with a closure of Slater plus Montgomery High being the two closures to keep the feeder line more consistent. Then there was a lot of specific questions about rather than these elementary schools, those elementary schools. But a lot of those can kind of be plugged in by the scenarios that we've already provided. Those weren't really new ones. Things like keep Monroe, Burbank, Hidden Valley, Lincoln and Proctor open. And then doing a, a combo where Montgomery, Piner and LC are all seven twelves. Ridgeway shifting from a continuation school to an alternative school, making that seven twelve. And then maybe possibly placing that on the same campus as Santa Rosa High. And then keeping Correo as a nine twelve and Rincon Valley as a seven eight. Those were the scenarios I captured.
So can I just, I heard a lot of ideas and I know what I said. So just to add a label to the two that I was throwing out there, one was a four three zero and there was a four four zero with timeline understandings. I think if I say it that way, then we can fill the details in to make sure it's on the list.
And I'm sorry, I just have to look to my team to say, okay, with all of those different options, are we able to get the data and bring back information in a, you know, within the next week, less than week?
Can I just interrupt though, Lisa? Because I know it's like a feasibility thing, but to make informed decisions on this side, we have to. Like, whatever you can do, please get us the information respectfully.
So, thank you. I understand and I agree to the point of though that also it's not without a narrowed, without narrowed parameters. It is, it is not physically possible to bring back every detail for every scenario. I would love to be able to say that we can. And this, these are the things that, I mean, this has been months in the making, bringing to you what we have now. It's this, this is, it's reflective of tens of people, you know, interdepartmentally. This is not the work of one person or two or three or five, ten. It's much more than that. And so there's a huge coordination where we also still have to make sure that schools run. I'm just trying to be
Within that context, and I really do respect all the work you've done. It's amazing. We could be looking at our next special meeting being the seventeenth or eighteenth, which would imply more than a week. And then I think for me, the macro analysis is the capacity of the additional elementaries from moving it. So if we weren't able to get all of the individual scenarios, having an understanding of what, where they could go with those changes would then give more of an ability to analyze them.
So we do have to give up this space now. Thank you, everyone, for the discussion, the information. Meeting adjourned.